Good evening, everyone. To those who are here in person in Long Beach, to those who are in person at our school in Catalina, and to those of you who may be live streaming. I will ask our superintendent, Dr. Baker, to take a roll call and establish a quorum.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez?
Present.
Mr. Otto?
Here.
President Craighead?
Here.
Dr. Benitez?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Student Board Member?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you. And now, I'd like to ask our student representative from CAMHS, Mr. Corey Umomoto, to lead us in the pledge.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart and face the American flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Corey. The board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The board took action on the following item. On item 3.1, the board voted 3-0 to approve the appointment of an acting principal. And I will now ask Mr. Zaid for some specific information on that.
We are happy to announce that we have Janique Radalov moving from program facilitator at Dooley Elementary to acting assistant principal at Dooley Elementary. And she is backfilling for Sharita, who is the acting principal at Herrera.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we are at adoption of the agenda. Dr. Baker, did you have something?
Thank you. Just one amendment to a resolution, to Resolution 051925-B. There's simply a typo in the fourth paragraph. It says Stanford Middle School, and this resolution is for Gant Elementary School.
Move to approve agenda as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. And now, we are at the introduction of our student representative. So, once again, we welcome Corey Umomoto from CAMHS. Corey, we're happy to have you.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Corey Umomoto, and I have the distinct honor of serving the California Academy of Mathematics and Science as their Associated Student Body President. And I'm here to share a couple updates from CAMHS. First off, I want to congratulate our boys volleyball team, who this past Saturday were recently crowned CIF champions. And just seeing their overall success is really testament to the strength of our athletics program and the rate at which it is growing. I want to shout out the student athletes, the faculty members, our athletic director, Ms. King, and the coaches for putting so much of their time and dedication into building up our athletics program. Because sometimes people do tend to forget that CAMHS does have sports. But to see us, that we do have sports, and to see us excel in it is such an amazing thing for our school. In addition to serving as ASB president, I also serve as an RSVP ambassador on the Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee. And the goal of RSVP this year was to address our school site's equity dilemma, which for CAMHS was a lack of cultural awareness. So, I saw that a lot of the initiatives, being an RSVP ambassador, also aligned with the different ASB events that I could hold as ASB president. So, for example, in January, we held our first-ever Lunar New Year celebration, and we welcomed traditional Tibetan dancers, had a shuttlecock game, and had other traditional performances by students at a lunchtime rally. This past February, we welcomed high school students from Japan who were able to shadow our CAMHS students and learn a little bit more about American culture and American high school. And in turn, our CAMHS students were able to learn about what the life is like at a Japanese high school. And that way, we're able to foster a lot of cultural exchange. It was also fun for some of our Japanese students to try and practice their Japanese and try communicating. I know I did my best, too. And then, this past March, we had our first-ever multicultural fair night market. So, this transformed event allowed some of our cultural clubs to sell food after school. And we're able to use food as a platform of cultural exchange. In addition, we also had some of our cultural clubs do performances. And overall, it was a really fun event. It was a great community event. And we even invited some of our recently admitted ninth, incoming ninth graders to this event, so they were able to get a good feel of what CAMHS is like before actually stepping foot on their first day at CAMHS. And in addition to these events, we also celebrated some of our monthly heritage months. This includes Black History Month, Women's History Month, Arab-American History Month, Asian-American and Pacific Islander Month. And upcoming, we have a Celebration for Pride Month. And along with ASB, I also serve as the senior class vice president. And our class board has been well underway to plan for our senior year events. This Friday, we have our prom, which we're super excited about. And we kind of like to joke and say that the past four years of fundraising, event planning, and organizing is all boiling down to four hours at prom this year. But we're super excited, and it's super exciting to see all of our hard work pay off. After prom, we have grad night at Disney California Adventure, senior picnic, and that all leads up to graduation. So, on the note of graduation, with about 15 days left that I can say as a current student of LBUSD, I just wanted to use my last couple moments with this platform to thank a lot of people. I want to thank all of you for your time and dedication to uplifting student voices and making my journey and so many others so memorable and so influential. And I also want to especially shout out President Craighead, Dr. Baker, Dr. Twal, and Mr. Suarez for having such an impact on my LBUSD journey. And I just want to thank you for providing such a warm, welcoming, and inclusive environment for students to learn in, thrive in, and advocate for themselves in. And just once graduation happens, I'm so proud to say that I am a product of the Long Beach Unified School District. So, thank you. And that concludes my board report.
I'm pretty sure I'm not the only one sitting here impressed. I'm just hearing from your experience and everything. But did you mention your plans for next year?
Yes. I will be attending USC, and I'll be majoring in the business of cinematic arts.
You may have some...
If we allow it, we'll allow it.
We'll allow it. Yeah. Dr. Benitez has turned his water bottle around. Yeah. It's kind of a divided group, but we're very proud of you. Do you have someone here you'd like to acknowledge? Somebody who's here supporting you?
Yes. I brought my mom today. I invited her. And I just wanted to thank her for all her support when, before I got my license, driving me to my different activities, dealing with my crazy hours. And even if I don't show it a lot, I'm really appreciative for your support.
Oh, very nice, very nice. Okay. I think we'll take a little break for a picture. So, Corey, we'll invite you up. We'll do a photo. Next on the agenda, we have recognitions and acknowledgements. And we're going to start with our student board member, Alana, who will read the resolution for our classified employees.
Thank you. Resolution of the Board of Education of the Long Beach Unified School District, Supporting Classified School Employee Week. Whereas, an informed, educated citizenry is a foundation for the success of our democracy, our economy, and America's future. And whereas, classified employees, often operating largely in the background and out of the limelight, provide essential support and contribute immeasurably to quality educational programs for our children, youth, and adults, and touching the lives of so many individuals with a profound and lasting effect. And whereas, dedicated classified employees display a deep commitment to our public schools, helping to create an environment conducive to excellence and equity for thousands of students. And whereas, the Long Beach Unified School District is recognized as a leading school system. And this distinction is due in large part to our classified employees, whose daily efforts and support are deeply valued and appreciated by everyone in our school communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Long Beach Unified School District hereby proclaims May 19th to 25th as Classified School Employee Week and urges everyone to express their deep gratitude to all classified employees for their vital services to the students of the Long Beach Unified School District.
Thank you, Alana. Let's see. Next, I believe we have a video for our board-certified teachers.
National Board Certification is a process designed for teachers to demonstrate the standards-based evidence of positive impact they have on student learning. It is public assurance that teachers have met the profession's highest standards for accomplished practice. It is grounded in their five core propositions that describe what teachers should know and be able to do. Teachers have a commitment to student learning. They know the subjects they teach and how to teach those subjects to students. They are responsible for managing and monitoring student learning. They think systematically about their practice and learn from experience. And teachers are members of learning communities. The certification process is designed to collect standards-based evidence of accomplished practice and is divided into four proponents: content knowledge, differentiation in instruction, teaching practice and learning environment, and being an effective and reflective practitioner. In Long Beach Unified, we offer support to teachers in different stages of their national board certification journey. We currently have 28 teachers in a pre-candidate program, 59 in our candidate program, and 172 teachers who have received their national board certification. National board candidates that complete the process and achieve their NV certification receive an additional compensation at a rate of 5% of their base salary. The district also provides support meetings for teachers who need to maintain their certification. NVCTs also have...
Okay. Congratulations to those teachers. Next up, Dr. Baker. I think you have an introduction.
Yes. Under recognitions and acknowledgements, I would like to call Dr. Rebecca Lee to the podium to be acknowledged. And I want to just tell you a little bit about Dr. Lee. We are so fortunate tonight on the Classified Personnel Report. You will see Dr. Lee's appointment to executive officer of the Personnel Commission. Very important appointment for us. And it is special that it's coming during Classified Employee Week. So, we are grateful for Dr. Lee coming back to the Long Beach community. She's a graduate of Poly High School, a jackrabbit. And there are some in this area that will be supportive of that. Also, has worked in personnel administration, both in certificated and classified personnel administration over the last 15 years, most recently in Poway Unified School District as the Director of Personnel Commission. Prior to that, in certificated personnel for San Diego Unified, and also working in Los Angeles Community College District. She earned her doctorate at USC. Go Trojans! Also has a master's in public administration from Cal State Long Beach and a bachelor's degree in political science from University of California, San Diego. We are so pleased to make this introduction tonight and look forward to working with Dr. Lee in her administration of the Personnel Commission.
Baker and Cabinet, it's an absolute honor to return home to the Long Beach Unified School District as the executive officer of Personnel Commission and Classified Employment. As a proud graduate of Long Beach Poly High School, this district has shaped the person that I am today. And I'm honored and proud to be a product of Long Beach Unified School District. And I'm really excited to return back to the community that gave so much to me. That being said, I'm ready to get to work. I'm ready to support the classified staff. And I'm ready to help strengthen the programs and services that support our students and our schools. So, thank you so much.
Well, welcome, Dr. Lee. And we're happy to have you. And that brings us to video. So, I'll have you turn your attention to the screen once again.
We decided to really live into one of our core system values in our system portrait, which was to be an open district. So, we worked with 13 of our community-based organizations to host 86 staff members from Long Beach Unified on learning journeys where we went into the community to be with and among.
It really highlighted the fact that we're not just working for the students, but also for the families.
Being there and listening to people that are leading the program and hearing it firsthand was inspirational for me because I saw the power of doing something together with your community and trying your best to do whatever it is you can to help them.
If we are going to do different, we have to be different. And to be different, we have to be an open district that partners with city, community, and family in a unique way. And I think when you are in and with community in authentic ways, there's just a different credibility and relationship that becomes possible because there's just a generous, shared ownership and care for work that we both do or that we all do.
But it really scratched the surface. So, I think just highlighting that it was a great start and hopefully that it continues so that we really do form those partnerships, those meaningful partnerships with the community.
I appreciate how staff thinks outside the box so we can always improve, always innovate, always do whatever we can for the students and families of the district. Okay. Next up on the agenda, we have a public hearing. So, this is the time set aside for public hearings regarding the following: Resolution 051925-B, dedicate easements to the City of Long Beach at Gant Elementary School located at 1854 North Britton Drive, Long Beach, California, 90815, for new drop-off and pickup. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? We don't... okay. I don't see anyone who wishes to speak to this item, in which case, I will declare the hearing closed. And next on the agenda, we have public testimony on items listed on the agenda? And we have none. Okay. So, that takes us to public testimony on items not listed on the agenda.
We have seven.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll get started.
Hi. My name is Mackenzie Johnson. I'm a 10th grader at Renaissance High School for the Arts. And, okay. As we all know, the RAP programs for high schools and middle schools in our district are being removed. I'm here to talk today about one school in particular, Renaissance. Our school absolutely needs this program or some type of after-school alternative. The RAP program for us is used by at least 20 students every day. Most kids who work... Most kids have parents who work late and have to wait hours after school is over to be picked up. A lot of the kids at our school who are in this program have IEPs that include autism, ADHD, social anxiety, and have to walk home in areas that are not the safest. I have friends that I know personally who have been attacked simply getting food not too far from our school. I am aware that there are programs that kids can utilize so they don't have to walk home alone. But because we are a specialty school, we have kids who don't live in close or in the area at all. And because we don't have any sports that go on after school that kids could be doing, we need the program way more. RAP is a great place for kids to stay safe after school and study and work while waiting on a parent. This program has helped me personally by being a place I can work on my social skills and study in a quiet place with no distractions and stay while my mom works. My mother is self-employed and works long hours in a city far away from my school. So, her coming to get me during when school comes out is usually impossible. This program is a great place for me to stay while my mom works and a place for me to stay where she knows I am safe and where she doesn't have to rush to come and get me after she's done with work. I am aware that this program costs a lot of money, but getting rid of it is not only affecting me, but the other 227 people who signed the petition about this issue. So, implementing it at Renaissance is definitely a necessity.
Dr. Baker, at a future date, we get briefed on the status of the RAP program at Renaissance, please.
Cody Keenest will be followed by Janet Dominguez.
Good evening, LBUSD Board of Education, Dr. Baker, and senior team. Thank you for taking the time to hear me speak this evening. My name is Cody Keenest. I'm the Director of Bands and Orchestras at Lakewood High School. I'm here today to ask for your support in allocating funds to Lakewood High School and our music department for the 25-26 school year. We've seen immense growth in our program of over 200% in the past two years. In early February, I was notified that there was going to be a reduction in my school's FTE for the music support positions such as instrumental music aides and our piano accompanists. In the past year, we've increased the instrumental music aide position from .53 to full-time using our Prop 28 funds. We were given the notification that we could reduce or abolish the FTE, but with my principal out on medical leave for a substantial amount of time, our team had very little time to digest and fully understand how this would impact the upcoming school year. Thus, we were unable to make an adjustment to the position in the given timeframe. As a result, we are now fully funding this aide position through Prop 28, which was not planned on or budgeted for. If these changes remain in place, our students will not have access to the specialized instruction for marching, movement, and small group instruction on every instrument offered in our program. Extracurricular activities like competitive marching band, winter drum line, winter guard, lessons, festivals, and field trips would be exponentially more expensive to run. I believe that I can speak on the behalf of all music teachers in Long Beach. Prop 28 makes it so families don't need to donate to access these opportunities and this individualized instruction. This funding change directly affects our students. I know that this change in FTE is affecting more than just Lakewood High School. We, the high school music teachers, ask that these affected positions be covered one additional year by Long Beach Unified School District. So, we, the teachers, can have an appropriate amount of time to adjust to these necessary staffing changes. While our state is facing substantial budget cuts across the board, we need to be cautious, as a district, to not pull funding, not put the funding, the weight of funding, on the shoulders of Prop 28 as this crosses the line of supplanting pre-established positions and programs rather than supplementing them. These actions go against the core principles of Prop 28 and put us at risk of legal repercussions, including, but not limited to, losing access to these funds entirely, which would be so detrimental to our programs. On behalf of all of the music teachers and students in Long Beach Unified, I do truly thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed that we have staff members taking notes. So, thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Jeanette Dominguez, followed by Jessica Valenzuela.
Good evening, Board. My name is Jeanette Dominguez. I am the current treasurer for the Lakewood High School Band and Orchestra Boosters. The Prop 28 funds have made a huge difference in the music program because alone with just booster support, we spent over $24,000 this past school year. If you put that into perspective, that fed the kids throughout the whole year. We helped support those that couldn't make... The voluntary donations, we bought uniforms for some students that just... that couldn't. The socioeconomic impact that we have in Long Beach varies by each neighborhood. The socioeconomic impact that we have in Long Beach varies by each neighborhood. Our students are having to drive from a different area to come to Lakewood High School for our music program. They come here because they know the legacy, what it's like to be part of the Lakewood Lancer Regiment, as I do. I am a product of the Lakewood High School Regiment, and I am proud to say that that program has helped me throughout the years. And now I am very proud that my son is a part of it, and I don't want him to go without those resources. So we do truly ask that we keep this funding because it would be truly impossible to have this program and still support our students. Thank you.
Jessica Valenzuela, who will be followed by Danielle Urbina.
Good evening, Dr. Jill Baker and District Board members. My name is Jessica Valenzuela. I want to start by thanking Ms. Maldonado for the call today that I received that my child was accepted to Keller Middle School Dual Immersion Program. And I also want to thank Board Member Lopez and Mr. Moskowitz for the back-and-forth correspondence regarding my child's placement. This whole ordeal to prepare for my child's upcoming year has been very stressful. And as I navigated through this, questions arose. And I submitted a public records request on May 15th. I requested the data of ethnic demographics of those who chose their first choice from going to Henry and to Keller School of Choice. And I also would like to know how many were native speakers and non-native speakers or Spanish as their second language. Another question that arose, how many minority students are getting their first choice? This is a question that I've been asking myself, and I want answers. I was here at the last board meeting to advocate for my child, but now I feel compelled to advocate for those voices who we have not heard. Thank you.
Danielle Urbina, followed by Dina Carter.
Good evening, esteemed colleagues and LBUSD community. My name is Dani Urbina, and I stand before you as a proud speech and language pathologist serving in the Long Beach Unified School District. I'm deeply honored to take a moment to recognize that May is National Speech and Language Hearing Month, a time to recognize those who have dedicated themselves to raising awareness of communication disorders and the essential work that speech-language pathologists and speech-language pathologist assistants do to support those affected. In particular, yesterday, May 18th marked National Speech and Language Pathologist Day, a day that celebrates the dedication and impact of SLPs across the country. But today, I'm not just here as a representative of my profession, I'm also here as someone with a personal connection to this work. I'm an SLP, and I'm also a person who stutters. I share that not for sympathy, but for strength. I want my students who stutter and those with any communication differences to see someone who talks with pride, not shame, someone who doesn't wait for perfect fluency before speaking up. I want them to know their voice matters and that communication is not about perfection, it's about connection. Being an SLP in our school district is a privilege, but it also comes with significant challenges. The needs are great. We serve students with a wide range of speech, language, articulation, voice and fluency disorders, social communication difficulties, communication differences like augmentative and alternative communication, and more. Many of our students are multilingual, adding another layer of complexity and richness to our work. The caseloads we manage are often well beyond recommended guidelines, and we are stretched thin trying to meet compliance demands while still giving each child the time, creativity, and care they deserve. Evaluations, IEP meetings, documentations, therapy planning, family and peer professional consultation, adjunct hours, defensible report writing, it all adds up. But we stay because we care, because we know that communication is the foundation of learning, of relationships, and of life itself. We're not just therapists, we're advocates, collaborators, and often the quiet champions in a child's journey towards self-expression. Today, in this month of recognition, I urge us to do more than acknowledge the importance of speech and language services. I call on the district to take meaningful action by ensuring manageable caseloads and workloads for SLPs, so every student receives the quality and support they need to thrive and succeed. And to every student who's ever hesitated before raising their hand or feared speaking out loud, I see you, your voice is powerful, and I'll never stop fighting for it. Thank you for your time and continued support.
Good evening, Madam President and Superintendent, Dr. Baker, and all the members of the Board. My name is Dina Carter, and I am a parent of a student in Long Beach Unified for three children, so my students have been in Long Beach Unified for 24 years, and I have one more left. I currently have a student at Lakewood High School. Both my oldest and now my youngest have been a part of the Lakewood Band. I would like to express my sincere gratitude for your continued support to the music programs in our schools. These programs foster a strong community belonging and a purpose for students. For my son, band has been transformative. It has shaped him into a leader, sparked his passion for music, and inspired him to pursue a future in music education. This is a direct reflection of the exceptional work of Principal Merlo and Mr. Kunis and the environment they have created. I respectfully request that a 20% of Prop 28 funds allocated directly to the school sites to be left at the discretion of the site leadership and stakeholders, including the principal, school site council, and educators like Mr. Kunis. Mandating how these funds must be spent limits their ability to meet the unique needs of their programs and students. The flexibility to allocate funds where they are most impactful, whether for equipment, travel, or enrichment opportunities, is essential to maintaining the vibrant and inclusive culture that exists within the Lakewood Band program. Many of our students come from families with limited financial needs, with a significant portion qualifying for free and reduced lunch. Asking families to contribute $500 or more places a heavy burden on them and can exclude students from valuable opportunities. I urge you to consider the equity implications of requiring site-level funds to be used exclusively for things like staffing, especially when the district retains 80% of the 9.9 million in Prop 28 funds given to Long Beach Unified. Those funds can be directed towards FTEs. Lastly, I want to express my deep appreciation for hiring Mr. Kunis. His dedication and talent have made a profound difference, and I am confident that the Lakewood High School Band program will continue to thrive under his leadership. I speak on behalf of many families when I say that experience, such as the band trips, competitions, and performances are invaluable. These are the moments that shape our students' high school experience and their future aspirations. Thank you for your time and continued support.
And the final speaker is Judith Nguyen.
Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent, and community members. My name is Judith Nguyen, and I'm here for the third time to speak on behalf of parents asking for Long Beach Unified to expand the collaborative co-teaching through 5th grade. Since March, I've been attending CAC meetings, and I'm not alone. I've heard the same concern from many parents at CAC meetings, resource fairs, birthday parties. CCT is working. It's helpful, it's helping our children thrive, and yet we're learning that this critical support will end after 2nd grade. We're here to ask why. I'm a parent of a child with a speech delay from Emerson Parkside Academy, and I've seen firsthand how transformative a co-taught classroom can be. With two teachers in the room, my daughter receives the individualized attention she needs. She's speaking more, she's more confident, she's connecting with her classmates in ways I've never seen before. To raise awareness and organize community support, I created a petition last Wednesday. In just one week, we've already gathered over 380 signatures. These aren't just numbers, these are voices from schools like Emerson, Bernie, and King. Families are coming together because we know this model works. I've also launched a website where parents can leave testimonials, stay updated on where we are in the journey, access research for supports, access research that supports CCT, and most importantly, connect with others advocating for our children's needs. The website is lbusdct.org. This is not a niche concern, it's a growing movement, and the message is clear: don't stop support at 2nd grade. We're asking for something, we're not asking for something new, we're asking to continue what is already working. CCT provides consistency, equity, and inclusion for both neurodivergent and neurotypical students. It supports teachers, reduces classroom management issues, and builds stronger communities. I urge the Board, ah, sorry, I urge the Board to act on what we've know, what you've now heard multiple times, don't let this model disappear when it's most needed. Let's work together to expand collaborative co-teaching through 5th grade for our children, our teachers, and for the future of inclusive education in Long Beach. Thank you.
Dr. Baker, just want to confirm that Dr. Solzawa Adarama is in conversation with parents, and can I get her on this issue?
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have reports on superintendent advisory groups. Although today, the Board attended site visits, and we didn't attend superintendent advisory groups, but I'll just check in to make sure in case somebody has a report, but I'm not expecting reports today, so we'll start with the business budget and policy development.
No report for me, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Instruction and student learning?
No report.
Workforce development?
I do have a report. It's just a quick update from a couple of meetings ago, but I just wanted to make sure that people are aware of a couple of topics. One is our Equity Leadership and Talent Development. So we're currently in the process of recruiting the pipeline, program candidates for the 25-26 school year. This great opportunity is for those within our district as well as outside of the district to join and learn about what it means to be an equity-centered leader in Long Beach. So it's really just been a great pipeline for us, and we wanted everybody to know that that pipeline is open. Next, we also have our Preliminary Administrative Service Credential and our Clear Administrative Service Credential. Last week, we launched our second cohort of the LBUSD Preliminary Administrative Service Credential, or PASC, program with 21 internal candidates from the departments and sites across Long Beach. The new cohort of students is currently taking two courses, School Improvement Leadership and Visionary Leadership. We are excited to continue the growth of our own internal program that provides an opportunity for future leaders to learn about what it means to be LBUSD. In addition, we look forward to welcoming and supporting our first cohort of LBUSD Clear Administrative Service Credential candidates in 25-26 school year with our own internal program designed for our new administrators. And then last, but definitely not least, just giving a quick update on our status with our substitutes. So in the last six months, we've hired a total of 400 day-to-day substitutes, which now brings us to a total of 1,650 substitutes in LBUSD. We are working to actively recruit additional day-to-day substitutes for 25-26 school year, and this is a great way to learn about our system and obtain experience at multiple levels and sites across our district. So if you are interested in being a substitute, please reach out. That's the end of my report.
Great, but while you're at it, next we have Student Outcome-Focused Governance, and I'm wondering if you wanted to take a moment to talk about any updates with parent engagement or anything else?
Correct. So not parent engagement, but community engagement. And so, following our meeting on Monday, I created a preliminary plan, sent it back to Jeff for, I mean Jeff, Greg for comments. He and I went back and forth on a couple of those major topics. All things considered, I made some revisions to my plan, and I put it in both you and Jill's inbox earlier today. So I would hope to be able to bring that to our next board meeting for conversation to talk through really two major next steps items, which are us deciding on three potential venues to host our community outreach events in our subsequent districts, and also creating a strong one-hour script for those meetings.
Great, thanks for the updates. Okay, we will move on to our consent calendar, so we'll need a motion for that.
Second.
Discussion, you have something, Dr. Benitez?
Just a quick question, Dr. Lund, from our instruction report. I know we got a handout on the revision of Spanish and Spanish-for-speakers curriculum and course revisions. Can you talk a little bit about those?
Of course, there are four sets of courses that are up for approval for tonight to our Heritage Language Associated, so you can think back to our master plan work and our support for Heritage Language. All the Spanish-for-Spanish-speakers courses, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, 8, our French-for-Spanish-speakers course, which obviously leveraged, both of those courses really were revised to really tap into funds of knowledge, asset-based approaches to support students who bring obviously a wealth of experience and language to the courses and making sure that that is being leveraged in support of the instructional program. The third course is our straight Spanish course, Spanish 1, 2 through 7, 8. And then the final course was an ELD course in support of our ELD continuum at the high school level. And they are really being revised, not just from an equity standpoint, but also to really connect back to recently adopted materials that were adopted within the last two years.
Is there any, or will there be, actually I should rephrase that again, Dr. Lund, what will be the connection between those revisions and our English Learner Master Plan?
If you, so specifically to Chapter 7, within that English Learner Master Plan, there's the support for the Heritage Language Programs. These courses specifically support that multilingual approach within the district in support, obviously, of our dual language programs at the elementary and currently at the middle school level. Broadly speaking, there is an English learner component to language programs, and how can that be leveraged as a core component to supporting students in the learning?
Thank you.
I do have a question, item 15.7, bids number 22 and 23, the contracts with Omena Partners, one for $300,000 per year through September 2028 for a total of $900,000, and the other one with the same company for $400,000 a year through 2027 for a total of $800,000. If someone can just elaborate on those two contracts?
Sure, we'll be piggybacking off of the terms of previous bids from other governmental entities, and we're piggybacking off of the term, so the dates of 2027 and, I'm sorry, 2027 and 2028, those are the terms from the contract that we're piggybacking off of. So that time range is in the contracts that we're piggybacking off of, and we're just utilizing that term.
Can you explain that contract, those contracts?
So, this allows us to piggyback off of the terms at another governmental entity, so they bid out these services, and we are piggybacking off of those terms. Those contracts contain terms that go through 27 and 28, so we're utilizing those terms.
Any further discussion? Then I will ask Dr. Baker to take a roll call vote. Ms. Lopez? Aye. Mr. Otto? President Crakehead?
Aye.
Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Student Board Member Arroyo?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Staff Report, Student Outcome-Focused Governance, Voices from the Field, and as I mentioned earlier, we went And as I mentioned earlier, we went on a field trip today. So instead of being in the board building for our afternoon meetings, we were at a couple of schools. Half of us were at Hamilton, the other half at Cabrillo. And we had the opportunity to meet with students, which is always a highlight and much appreciated. But I will turn things over to Dr. Madrigal.
Actually, before Dr. Madrigal starts, I'll just encourage you to have your notes and things ready from the site visits, because when the initial part of the presentation is done, I think President Craighead's going to prompt for discussion. And it'll be good to have your, your notes ready to go.
We appear to be playing musical chairs.
We can monitor and adjust, right? That's what we do in education. So we're going to start our presentation today by first talking about our quantitative data, specifically our positive student outcome data. And then we will follow with a discussion around the qualitative data, which is what humanizes our data points. And we're going to uplift those voices that we heard this afternoon from the field, both at Cabrillo and at Hamilton. But we do want to mention that our focus today will be centered around board goal three, which is our algebra proficiency, and board goal four, which is our college and career readiness. Some of the data points that you're going to be seeing today are, should be familiar. They're from our presentation from March, our March update on board goal three and four. But just to frame our focus today, we are going to have an opportunity to look at that quantitative data. We'll have a discussion around those data points for board goal three. Then we will transition into a discussion around the qualitative data. We're highlighting these two schools because these two schools had positive outlier data, data for both board goal three and four, not just looking at one school versus the other. I think we learned this afternoon that practices as well as the experiences of the student, of the students really told us a lot around perhaps the why we're seeing this positive outlier data. We will have two discussions, as mentioned, and we will also pause for any questions that staff may have. So I'm going to actually transition now to have Mr. Samuels introduce our first school that we will be highlighting.
Good evening, everyone. This first school is actually a school that has a special place in my heart. About thirty years ago, I walked on that campus as a new teacher. So Hamilton Middle School in North Long Beach is, is where I began my journey here in Long Beach Unified as an educator. One, one great thing about Hamilton is, is that its services, a particular portion of our community that sometimes is often overlooked, but a very special group of students attend there. We're comprised of, eighty percent of our students are Latino, eleven percent are, are Black, and about twenty-five or twenty-seven percent are multilingual learners. And, and the staff is motivated. Our principal there has been working tirelessly to really ensure that there's teacher collective efficacy happening on campus. And I do believe that some of the work that the site has been focused on and that the principal and our IAC have been working on have developed the fruit that we're going to talk about tonight. And so that, that's Hamilton. And so I'm going to allow Dr. Madrigal to, oh, do I get to? Well, then, then let's talk about Cabrillo. And, and Cabrillo, obviously here on the west side of Long Beach. And I am proud to say that I am a west sider, so I have a special connection to Cabrillo as well, being someone that grew up on Santa Fe Avenue. And Cabrillo is one, one of our comprehensive high schools. It's, it's one of the smaller versions of our comprehensive high schools with seventy percent, seventy-six percent of our students are Hispanic in origin and ten percent are Black students and about twenty-two percent are multilingual learners. And I'm, I'm glad to see that they're going to be highlighted as well, because there at Cabrillo, they've been doing some really, really good work. And oftentimes, folks don't hear about all the great work that's happening here on the west side. And, and there's some strong teacher collective efficacy that's happening with the algebra teachers. And I'm glad to see that we're going to hear about some of, some of the positive aspects of what they've done. So Dr. Madrigal.
All right. Thank you. We will start by reviewing some of our quantitative data that we shared in our March update. So what we're going to look at is just a summary of goal three. And as mentioned in, in our March update, sixty-nine percent of our ninth graders are on track to meet the Algebra A through G requirements by the end of ninth grade. We also saw that there was a five percent gap between our Black and African-American and all other students. So we know that there is still work that needs to be done overall. And, and keep in mind that this summary is overall for all our schools. This isn't specific to Cabrillo. But what we do want to, or to the two schools, I should say. But what we do want to mention is that when we look at our first school, which is our Hamilton, our middle school, and we're looking at algebra, something that we did notice when we looked at our data for our first semester is that, at the Hamilton, both Black African-American students and all other students increased the Algebra A, the Algebra ABC rate in Semester One of this year compared to last year. And as you can see by the visual, eighteen percent gap in their ABC rate in the first semester. The gap was eliminated in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And our Black African-American students had a six percent higher ABC rate in our, in this first semester. So a lot to be proud of there in terms of the data points for Hamilton. Now, as it pertains to Cabrillo, we saw a very similar pattern. We saw that there was a large increase in the ABC rate for our Black African-American students and a more moderate increase for all other students. There was a twelve percent gap in the ABC rate in the first semester of the, of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The gap was eliminated in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, meaning this school year. Our Black African-American students had a six percent higher ABC rate in the first semester. So again, very positive data. And that is actually the data when we ran our numbers to look at where could we spend some time and learn about our students and where we're seeing some positive outlier data. As I shared the summary for the, for goal three, it's hard sometimes when you look at that summary to be able to infer and pull this positive outlier data. And so in our research department, it's a commitment of ours to dig deeper into that data and see where do we see those bright spots throughout our district. And so when we saw that Hamilton and Cabrillo had some positive outlier data, we wanted to learn more. And that is how we came to this point of looking at, perhaps, let's go out to the field and learn more from our students. And so for today's discussion, we are going to center our three themes around student experiences or early student experiences, preparation for algebra, and personal experiences and suggestions, because we also know that every student has a different lived experience. And as they move through our system, they're able to give us information regarding what worked really well for them as well as what are some things that, the question we asked, I know at Hamilton, we asked, if you could go back, what could you tell us about things that you learned that you would do differently or things that supported you? So again, uplifting their lived experiences and uplifting their voices. So what we want to do is give those that did not participate today some context around what we experienced. We had two teams go out to the sites. Ten students at each site participated in a focus group. And we used a World Cafe instructional method, which explores, usually it explores a articulated topic, a very focused topic. And usually in a World Cafe style, we get to ask a set of questions and get to learn more from the small intimate group. And these questions, as I mentioned, are grounded in these three themes. And at Hamilton, we got a chance to spend time with eighth graders. And at Cabrillo, you had a chance to spend time with ninth graders. And my understanding is maybe you had some sprinkles of maybe an eleventh or twelfth grader. Those of you that participated at Cabrillo will probably share more about that. And so we had an opportunity to listen, learn, ask questions, have them share with us. And so at this time, I'm going to ask if Board President Craighead would kick us off into our discussion.
President Craighead? Just clarity on slides eight and nine before we get into the field. What you just covered.
All right. Clarity?
So when I first saw the slides, Dr. Madrigal, all honesty, I was like, okay, there's going to be an explanation here. Props to you because you're always so even keel. But I'm wondering if you and the team is containing the excitement. If I'm reading this correctly, that's a Semester One to Semester One comparison. Thirty-six percent change in the positive at Hamilton and twenty-two percent?
Yes.
Change at, at Cabrillo? Again, like, that's huge, right? And I was like, okay, there'll, there'll be some kind of, you know, am I interpreting this correctly?
That is correct. I mean, you've tasked us in the past, you've challenged us and said, like, we want to learn more. And so we've really taken that as a, that's our driver, our north star, that we, again, we often bring data to the board and the data sometimes can appear flat or it doesn't tell you much. And this is the beauty of qualitative data, that you're able to look at the quantitative and dig deeper. And so that's what we did. Our team looked at patterns and trends. And also, we looked at what type of professional development has occurred. And then we started to ask questions. And what I didn't mention is that the team, and props to the Hamilton as well as the Cabrillo team, we did a lot of work collaboratively, the research team as well as the schools. We participated in Zoom meetings to learn more, because with a visit, you can't learn everything, right? But we got to ask a lot of questions around the same thing. We thought like, wait, let's check the data, let's make sure that this is correct. And it is absolutely correct. I think in the discussion, you're going to learn at least from the Hamilton and, you know, Cabrillo will also probably give us some insight. We learned some things about shifts and thinking and reflecting those adult actions as well as students being able to connect with their learning in the classroom as well as outside. So I think it was a combination of different things. But yes, your, what you're inferring is actually, it is correct.
Yeah. Thank you for not letting us gloss over that part.
I was like, there's something, I mean, I don't want to get up and start cheering here. I mean, it's two semesters of data, but that's dramatic.
Yeah. Yeah. That's very dramatic.
I mean, beyond.
In the best way.
In, in, in incredible, incredibly positive, sorry, my mic's, in an incredibly positive way. So I appreciate the even keelness there, Dr. Madrigal. But I just didn't want us to glance over this and start going into the qualitative field data.
Absolutely.
Okay. But now we will. Now we're going to go into the qualitative field data. And I think we should start with the Hamilton visit, because that's middle school. And we were at a high school. So I'm curious about your visit. Tell us a little bit about who you, who you met with. And maybe if you can give us some ideas on your, I don't want to say findings. That's not the word I'm looking for. But just ideas that you've come away from after speaking with the students as it relates to our, our board goals.
Well, I thought it was a great opportunity to, to speak directly to, to the students. And we also had the opportunity to speak to, to the teachers. But the, what stood out for me were what students said helped them get to, to the place that they're in, in doing well in class. And they definitely spoke about a homework, homework help after school. So getting assistance after school was key in, in understanding material. They were also very consistent in saying the one-on-one with the, with the teachers was very helpful. I did ask about the, the grading policy and the opportunity to make up work. And one thing that stood out from that was that students said, well, like in math, if we don't know it, it doesn't matter how many times we take the test. If we didn't master the concepts, we just won't, you know, we won't show improvement. So what was key there is they absolutely needed to have that one-on-one. They needed to have that assistance after school and the relationship with teachers to, to, to be able to, to ask questions. They talked about not, you know, a lot of kids being shy and not being comfortable asking questions in class. And that's super normal for middle and high schoolers. And so, so the, the, that opportunity to be able to get that help was, was, was essential in, at Hamilton.
So, and, and I also was at Hamilton today. And we met with two groups of students, each about groups of six or seven. And it's always fascinating to talk to middle schoolers. You know, you ask them a question and they go, okay. What was your question? And, and, but, but it was very, it was very illuminating. We asked questions about early student experiences, about preparation for algebra and how they felt they were prepared. We asked questions about early, about. These are two together, let me pull them. Here they are. Those are the teachers. Sorry.
I can jump in just at some other things. Kids did talk about that hands-on learning was critical, right? So hands-on learning, learning in groups really helped them retain information and understand concepts. And, and, and a couple of students, at least definitely one, talked about the, when teachers simplify the work for them and give them notes, so note-taking was critical. I did ask if they had study guides, and that was something that students did use that they found helpful. So it was, it was clear that key at the school, what helped the kids were the relationships with teachers that after-school helped, that one-on-one instruction, the hands-on learning was super key in their success.
And I, I found my notes on the second page of my notes. We also talked to them about personal experiences and suggestions that they would have, and also additional questions and follow-ups. And I reiterate what member Lopez said. They were very impressed with the accessibility of, of the teachers to help them out with what they needed to learn. And it wasn't top-down. It was very much one-to-one. It was very much after-school, we're going to make sure that you get these concepts. And it was very, very impressive that, that relationship that the students had with their teachers and, and what it was that they were doing. I was particularly impressed with the time we spent with the teachers, because the teachers were very enthusiastic, had been thinking about this for a long time. The two teachers that we met with were relatively new. Both of them had been there about three years. One talked about the whiteboards, I can get it wrong and it's okay. And then they. And then they, and those are whiteboards on the wall. And there's also lap boards that are, are on the desks. And it was, it was very moving how they said that they learned things through that. They said they were constantly moving. It helps students teach out their styles and make connections to their daily lives by word problems and quadratics. They talked about how, how they taught quadratics. And that was fascinating because they said, you know, you have to be concrete. You have to talk about things in the real world and relate to them. And they said, we're a little challenged by a couple of those things, but, but we were able to do that. They said that, that, that the real-world examples that they, that they were able to use really connected with their students and that that seemed to be the basis for what it was that they were trying to accomplish. That if they, if they didn't have that and they didn't have the after-school work, it, it became a real learning environment. And, and they were very excited by, by what they were able to do with the teachers. And the teachers were talking among themselves about the things that they were trying and what was successful and what was more successful. And it just reminded me of how important it was to have teachers relating to teachers and, and how important it is to have teachers working not only with their students but together. They have aides come in and aides can assist with their particular problems. But it was, it was very moving to hear what the students had to say about it was, what they were learning and how they felt about what they were, they talked, a couple of the teachers talked about the problems that they had with students who would try and hold back and not participate because they hadn't had much success in math. But they were being drawn out and they were, and that was a prerequisite to accomplishments. And they seemed to be doing a great job about it. I hadn't looked at the data until after this meeting because I wanted to sort of get my own impressions. But I think that it was, it was a great experience. I tried to explain to them that we had pitched them because we thought that student voice was very important. They didn't relate to that at all, they just didn't care about that. And they're again, they didn't care about the, the school goals, I mean, the district's goals either. But, but the fact that they were learning was very inspirational.
I wanted to ask a quick question, Mr. Samuels. So with this eighth-grade cohort, would they have been the first group to do the Math Accelerated approach? I remember we were talking about the eighth graders that would be in Math Accelerated moving forward when it came to part of our plan? Am I, am I misspeaking here?
Yeah, I think that may be mixed up with, with something else.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I can remember a conversation about our sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students participating in accelerated math in, as an approach to improve their overall understanding of algebra and geometry. So you're saying that that's not a conversation that we?
No, I believe they went to a Math eight class.
Yes. And some, some were taking algebra. But many of them were in eighth-grade math and, and saw, had saw no difference in their attitudes or their, what they were learning. It was, it was very, very self-evident.
Well, we had a little bit of a different experience because we were speaking to two different groups of students. Dr. Benitez was in a separate group. And then after a certain amount of time, we switched. And Mr. Miller and I were with the other group and then we switched. So we had an opportunity to speak to all the students, just not all at the same time. And I think we came away with some pretty similar observations, actually. And so your light's on, so I think you, either you forgot to turn it off or, or it's your turn to speak.
Yeah, no, well, because there were a couple of things that I was really excited about. One was I can remember, shoot, maybe about two years ago, Mr. Moskovitz was talking about how, it was more of a principle, about how if we continue to challenge our students by taking an accelerated approach, that these students will continue to kind of meet those goals, right? Or at least land amongst the stars. So all things considered, when I was having our conversation with the students, you saw that I was pretty interested in not only what classes they took before the algebra and/or geometry classes that they were in now, but what things were they doing to help accelerate learning, right? And one, I guess, theme that I saw, where there were two major themes, were, I would say, there were a good amount of students who were in the eighth grade that took some form of accelerated math class that they were speaking to. The second one, and which I think was more important in regards to their comfortability within the class that they're in right now, as they consistently talked about the relationship they have with their teachers. And that was a consistent theme throughout the conversations in regards to availability for tutoring. We're talking about one-on-one approaches to answering problems. We heard about some fun techniques of even using their desk as a whiteboard. I was like, I was jokingly saying, in my day, they would call that graffiti? No. But no. All things considered, it was great hearing about the relationships that these young people were using to help improve their aptitude when it came to mathematics. And so I was humbled at their willingness to be there with us. But more importantly, I was impressed with the attention to detail when it came to what they knew about their A through Gs and why they're taking their math courses were so important, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, Dr. Benitez?
Yeah, I'll just build on what the colleagues have shared. I do want to lift up that full transparency was a challenge to, to get going with our, with our high school students. And I totally understand, I mean, folks that they've never met before, shown up to their campus. I was with these two guys in suits. So I understand the reservation and hesitancy, we don't have a relationship. I'm not one of their teachers or counselors, it's not a familiar face. And then we start showing up and asking them, so what do you like about math? All right, so in, in spite of that, I do want to also lift up a theme that's already been mentioned here. Just the huge impact that good teachers have on students. Whether it's relational, whether there's strategies that teachers are using, whether it's the values-based approach on emphasis on learning, not mutually exclusive on grades, but not using grades as this deficit sort of, you got an F, nothing you can do about it now. So we heard counter. So I'll, I'll read down, I have a, a list. Brian, Ed, if you, if you want to jump in. So we, we ended up broadening because of the challenge of taking a deep dive into algebra, broadening on just positive things that they've experienced in math and then some of the challenges that they've experienced in math. So again, no particular order. The appreciation, well, first off, thank you to the students. Deep appreciation to the sharing that the students did and to the learning opportunity that, that we had there. So from their perspective, deep appreciation of tutoring and the importance of tutoring. Appreciation for after-school support. A couple of students actually shared lunchtime support with math. Appreciation for, and the need for more one-on-one time with teachers. Right, in any context, whether it was during class, after class, at lunch, just the, the, the impact that that one-on-one interaction has. And I'll even be more specific because of the ability to provide structured feedback during that one-on-one time. An appreciation for those teachers that go above and beyond with study materials that go home with students that are still available to students. A couple of students had some ideas around, you know, could we do some more videos? Perhaps on subject matter? Because it, sometimes it doesn't come through in a, in a quick follow-up or in a quick lecture, but a video, I can go back and look at it again with those interactions, right, that one-on-one support. So videos, just more sort of at-your-own-pace-type resources beyond the one-on-one structured support. I heard at least five students share a variation of the importance of using samples and then walking students through the examples. So maybe not the exact thing that the, you know, they would be tested on, but something that the students could always refer back to and the importance of having someone, and in this case, even peers, right? So an appreciation for group work where they could refer back to an example. Stuff that students love were things like the use of virtual reality. As a matter of fact, we were taking up some students' time in the classroom that we were in. Were you gonna say, add something, Brian?
I was just gonna share related to that. So this year, we've been testing out, I'm working with a company called Prisms. Has been, they actually donated headsets. And we have trained teachers at Cabrillo, Lakewood, and Lindbergh. And they're using that to help their students particularly to understand visually how algebra works. And actually, I'd be curious even as we start learning a little bit more about the, the impact, I'd be curious to see the impact of the, the students who use that virtual reality in the pretty accelerated growth we're seeing in algebra at Cabrillo. But that is, that VR that they were talking about is specific to a program we've been testing out this year at those three sites.
Yeah. And, and VR, other digital technology, games, right, using math. A couple of them mentioned they liked the competition and incentivizing students through a sort of friendly competition. So again, a lot of this builds on what my colleagues have shared. But even there, I mean, I have a list of like 10, 12, you know, including VR. Ed, Brian, any, anything that I missed? I'm a good note-taker, that's why. Yeah. Thank you.
Well, the problem with going last is that everybody's covered pretty much everything I've taken notes on and my observations. And my observations align with everybody else where the, the adults in the students or, but the, you know, teachers and other adults like coaches or, or whoever, they're the, the biggest support and make the biggest difference in whether or not they, they get these math concepts and whether it's the one-on-one support, tutoring outside the classroom or even that peer-to-peer support during class. So as we can see from this data, the, you know, wonderful things are happening. The only thing I, I will mention is we, we talked a little bit about our grading policy. And from what I understand, it doesn't seem to be consistent across the board. It doesn't seem to be consistent from teacher to teacher. That was something outside of what's just been talked about. But Dr. Brown, anything else you'd, you'd add? No?
There was one more piece that I, I wanted to bring up. And it was a, a smaller one, but I felt like that it was important. So with the first cohort that we met with, we had a few juniors and actually one senior. And so in that group, one of the things that has been used as a tool to not only help with one student's progression academically, but also just to kind of keep her skills sharp, it sounds like, was participation in summer school, even as an eighth grader? Which I didn't even know that they could do? Like she, going from the eighth grade to the ninth grade? She had signed up for a math class because she had concerns about her skills. And so it became like a small theme within our conversation as three of the people in the room had participated in summer school. One for just grade improvement. But the other two were just centered around, one, one kid, which I thought was pretty cool. He was like, dude, I'm a football captain, I'm at campus all the time. He's like, I might as well get some credits while I'm here. Right? So he signed up for summer school. But all things considered, he spoke to how being active and learning over the summer helped him going into the next semester. So did the young lady in ROTC and so did another one of the students. And so as, as we think about tools and interventions, I, I can't help but think about like how impactful those summer school opportunities are, not only just for grade improvement, but also like knowledge retention, so.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned the summer school part of it. Sometimes with, with intelligence, it's not just what you know, but it's the decisions you make. And for these young adults to be in eighth grade or ninth grade planning to attend summer school just to sharpen their skills, just to, you know, stay up on things during the summer and not, not lose any of that traction, I applaud that. I, you know, I thought that was very mature. And that, it was just wonderful to hear from the students, you know, about that sort of thing. Okay, so that, I think we covered math pretty well. I think we're ready to move on to A through G.
All right, we're gonna move on to A through G. So for the second part of our discussion, we'll focus on board goal four, college and career readiness as measured by A through G completion. We'll review some of the data that we previously shared in March. And although we are not measuring A through G at Hamilton, we also included a discussion around A through G with our middle school students. But we'll focus on Cabrillo first and share some data points. So let's look at previously shared data which we shared in March. It was just an overview of our A through G on track. And as we mentioned in that presentation, when we're looking at A through G on track, specifically for this school, we're looking, we're measuring ninth grade and we're looking at English and math. And although we're measuring those two core areas, it doesn't mean that students are not taking other A through G courses because many of our students across our district do that. So just overall, our A through G on-track rates have remained fairly steady at semester one from the 22, 23 school year through the 24, 25 school year. Our Black African-American students declined slightly across grade levels whereas all other students increased slightly. So when we look at specifically our Cabrillo algebra and A through G on track, as I mentioned, we're monitoring A through G on-track status. And you can see that for grade nine, district-wide comparison on the left with the Cabrillo grade nine data on the right. So the, the 8% gap from the 23, 24 school year at Cabrillo was eliminated in the first semester this school year. Black African-American students at Cabrillo had a 7% higher ABC rate in semester one this school year compared to all other students and an 8%, 11% higher A through G on-track rate as compared to the district average for grade nine. So I'll pause here for you to just kind of reflect on that positive outlier data.
So I think again, Dr. Madrigal, you're, yeah, you're really underselling this, yeah. Quick question, Dr. Madrigal, it might be, maybe a refresher for us. I know that 10%, that Cabrillo, Black students at Cabrillo make up 10% of the students at Cabrillo. Could we sort of infer that there, there wasn't a significant change in our overall Black student population from two years prior?
I'll have to double-check to make sure that that's accurate. But we haven't seen a significant decrease where it would be noted in our data. So I can definitely provide the end size for our Black African-American students.
I mean, 32%. Incredible, incredible, yes.
So this is an example of when we share district-wide data, it's really important for us to also dig deeper and highlight those, those high, those bright spots across our district that we're seeing, that there's either, you know, we're closing that gap, we're seeing some positive outlier data. And again, learning from what is it that maybe they're doing that is different or that we can share with other sites? So a wonderful opportunity to highlight this for Cabrillo. And for our goal four discussion, very similar themes. We'll look at early student experiences, A through G requirements, and personal experiences and suggestions. And I will make a suggestion that we start with Cabrillo this time since we're gonna focus on A through G. And for Hamilton, we'll just engage in the conversation on what students learned at Hamilton in regards to what they know about A through G. So I'm gonna hand it off to President Craig Head.
Okay, um, let's see, Mr. Miller, you're like, jumping at the bit, so we'll start with you.
Treating it like an episode of Family Feud, no, I'm kidding. No. So the A through G conversation was an interesting one mainly because as we talked with the
Um, mainly because as we talked with the, uh, young men and young women about why this topic was important to us in regards to our board goals, um, uh, we, it was hard not to ignore one of the elephants in the room, which is all the things that have been happening at their campuses, right? And so, um, we first obviously took a moment to kind of acknowledge some of the difficulties and challenges, uh, that have been occurring, uh, at Cabrillo. But more importantly, applauding them for their, uh, continued success and their willingness to be here with us and talk through these topics, knowing that there are some larger things that have been occurring on their campus. And so, uh, all things considered, it was, it kind of sparked our conversation on, like, what are their long-term goals and what their, what their plans are? And, uh, as we spoke with them about, uh, those plans, I was personally surprised on the timing in which they were initially engaged with the idea of A through G compliance, right? Um, the majority of them sounded, it sounded as though they were first introduced with the idea, uh, in the ninth grade, which I, I think is fine. Uh, in the sense that that is the time where it is most pertinent, right? But I do believe that there is a benefit to being overly prepared or, uh, let's call it, uh, induced with this information at an earlier age. So when you're finally in that experience, you're like, oh, yeah, I, I know what this is. I know why we're having these conversations. And so, uh, all things considered, uh, the young people were well aware of the A through G requirements. They understood some of the strategies in which they could address, uh, uh, being in compliance if they did have, uh, hiccup. Uh, one of the students, uh, admittedly, I think I shared earlier, uh, went to summer school so that he could be back on track for A through G, uh, uh, compliance. Uh, but all things considered, uh, I think that, uh, the, the conversation was good. Like Juan was saying, it was a little tricky, uh, uh, getting to connect. I mean, I personally used the opportunity to talk more about myself, uh, in regards to my journey uh, to college and how with great mentorship, I was able to navigate the system. And I, I think I compared it to a video game of Assassin's Creed. Uh, I, I used, I used that analogy. Uh, if you've never played the video game, is, uh, it is a game where it has, uh, uh, challenges that you have to like go on certain doors and you have to put the key into this door to go into this room and so on and so forth. My point in all that is saying that at times I felt that when I was in high school, uh, the process in A through G was kind of confusing and, um, a bit cumbersome. But I think that the district, uh, for this generation has done a better job of making that process, uh, more transparent. But I, I, I wonder how, how much earlier we can introduce the ideas of A through G to them as, like I said, so that it's not treated as this, like, okay, now I know that this is important to me in regards to going to a four-year, but this is something that I'll experience, uh, going into high school. Just introducing it to them earlier.
Yeah, if I can just add a little bit to that. We, we had two students in our freshman group out of the one, two, three, four, how many? Six kids or?
Uh, maybe seven.
Six, seven? Um, two out of those seven had either a mother or a father who's a counselor in our district. The second group. So those students knew all about the A through G and what their expectations were. But for the other students who aren't learning about it until their freshman year, um, they're already behind the eight ball. They, they need to know about the A through G requirements before they get to high school so that they know, um, what the expectations are, so that they're aware of what their options are, what classes they need to take, why it's important to get an A, B, or C, that type of thing. So they can start out strong, so they don't have to backtrack. So I would say that learning about the A through G requirements, uh, you know, in your freshman year might, might not be an optimum situation. Maybe, maybe it would be better if we spent more time or made it more of a priority, uh, in middle school so that our kids come into high school with a better understanding of, of those expectations. So I, I would kind of add that for those kids whose parents just happened to be a counselor, you know, that was bonus, but we can't rely on kids having counselors as parents.
Yeah, the, the one thing I also want to applaud now that I'm, um, reviewing my notes and I don't want to miss this piece, is like I said earlier, we did have one senior in one of the cohorts. And he unfortunately had to almost speak as like the spokesperson of our A through G requirement. Uh, but one of the, uh, great responses that we got today was when I asked him and I was like, do you feel prepared for college? And his response was absolutely. And, um, I think that, cause this kid's graduating in, what, how many days are we talking about? You already gave me the countdown, right? Well, well, she's graduating, yeah, yeah, she's graduating in eighteen, right? But I guess theirs would be like sixteen to twenty. So, uh, their graduation day is around the corner, so they need to be, right? Um, but, uh, understanding, uh, the district's role and to hear that response made me feel pretty good, right? Cause this young man, uh, like I said, he was an ex-football player. He had, uh, he already knows what he wants to do post-graduation. And so, uh, even with the understanding of the A through G requirements and making sure that as he went through his, uh, process within the Long Beach Unified School District, that he was A through G compliant, uh, he does not have an interest in going to a four-year university. His interest was being a blue-collar worker and being an electrician. And he's known that, but he still wanted to keep his options open. And so I appreciated that, knowing, uh, that even in this process, he not only has had the support from the district to keep his options open, uh, but he was also very aware and very clear on why it was important in the first place.
Dr. Benitez, I'm gonna add just one more thing and then I'm gonna turn it over to you. Um, I would also, I would also say that it was the young woman who's in ROTC. She knows that she wants to, um, serve, um, in the military, but she also wants a college education. So she knows that, how important the A through G requirements are and she wants her options open. And I have a feeling, um, and she is the same one who, who, yeah, went into summer school prior to high school so that she could, you know, get a, a step ahead. I have a feeling she's gonna, um, you know, uh, go into an officer training or something like that. I, I don't see her being, um, a soldier, I see her being a leader. Um, you know, she's incredible as, you know, the, and that, that's such a important part about us connecting with the students to see their potential. They, they let us, they let us in on that. Dr. Benitez?
Yeah, they were very highly decorated already with what they were, uh, wearing. Um, again, just building, echoing, uh, my colleagues' observations, I, I would build on, on, in a couple areas. Um, we, we ended up taking sort of a step back and, and, and Brian ended up sort of broadening, uh, this around really two, two broader questions. One was around familiarity with A through G. And we did the whole kind of, really familiar, and then sort of have a series of conversations that way. And, and I would say, uh, if not all of them, the vast majority of them were familiar with A through G. Um, and they understood them as, oh, these are classes that we have to take to be able to, uh, you know, get a, go to UC or CSU. The technical aspects of, well, how many years of this, grades, uh, there was a wider variance with knowledge. Uh, we also had a student there whose parent was an assistant principal, uh, as well, uh, who said, yeah, my, my, you know, one of my parents is assistant principal, they're on me every day, uh, about this stuff. Um, and then the second sort of area of the conversation was around where they saw connections between their pathways and career and college readiness. Uh, and we got some very specific, uh, I think, uh, 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 of all the, the ways that we tried to ask questions and it wasn't easy, it was a good, yeah, good, good experience for us in that regard. That was the one where the students very specifically said very specific things about their pathway. Whether it was a specific course, whether it was some observations about AG, uh, global logistics, um, and the other pathways. It took a little bit of prompting from Mr. Samuels, uh, but they had very specific ways that they were, um, connecting or not. So there were wanderings around, um, you know, how was I supposed to know in the eighth grade what I wanted to do? Uh, right, and, and, and a wondering of, could, could we have more information? Are there more opportunities? Uh, not that the pathway is the end-all, be-all, but around what, what kinds of options are there with this? What kinds of careers? Uh, even if I'm in this pathway and maybe by the tenth or eleventh grade, I'm not quite feeling the pathway, how can I think about, uh, the, the opportunities and the options? So there, the, we got, we got some pretty, uh, varied responses in terms of, um, you know, very specific, uh, programs. Um, and, and that those programs sort of opened the doors of, well, you know, that program, I can understand it through a law context, or that program through an engineering context, or that experience or that activity that I participated in, or that teacher through a global logistics, uh, perspective. So I was appreciative of that. And I shared with them that we were gonna have a conversation with the subs, speaking to those students that they're watching. And two of them said they watch school board, uh, meetings. Um, I think, uh, two areas where, uh, I'd love to hear of the team's thinking and, and where those conversations are, where they're getting their A through G information from. I mean, a couple of them were able to very vividly say, oh, there's a chart right there in the classroom. Others, um, for instance, were not aware that they could log on their own, uh, and track their progress. I, I think it was the first group, um, none of them were aware of it. So I said, hey, so what if we had this thing where you could log on? And they were like, we, we checked that out right away. So I saw Brian like writing down, okay, so how are we communicating that we have these, uh, tools and resources for students? So I think that's one area around, yes, they kind of know what A through G is, but where would they go? And they said, you know, they all kind of were like, we'd go to a counselor. Uh, yeah, but it, the, it's still the, the, the burden rests on you, kind of to go to a counselor with questions or wonderings, or to a teacher, or, or to whoever, uh, on that team. And, and so that was, I, I left sort of with that. And then, and then the second piece is, um, I think this undue pressure that is felt, that I heard around not knowing what they were gonna do or what options were available, uh, to them. And kind of just left sort of like wondering, okay, how, how does, how is what I'm doing here connect to the future? And, and with a sense of, of hopefulness, uh, and, and the caveat here was, I won't frame it the same way, but again, this is what I took away, um, the, the pressure that students are in to have it all figured out or to feel that if they haven't figured it out, that somehow, you know, they're, they're less than where they should be. Um, and, and so one student actually, you know, I, I asked the question, what, what do you think we could do to inspire or motivate, uh, or, or, or be supportive of that? Um, and, and, you know, not, not that she would, you know, otherwise we would have brought her here tonight if she had the answer to that, to that one. But, but I think other students chimed in around the sense of the future, um, sort of what, what's, what's coming, what's on the horizon is different for a ninth grader that just started the high school experience than for a graduating senior. So I, so I, so I do leave sort of wondering, uh, around this college and career culture and readiness, what does that mean, right? What does that mean in the third grade? What does that mean in the sixth grade? What does that mean in the tenth grade? And what do we do for those students of which we have a so large percentage that is off track? Of course, we want those opportunities to be A through G eligible, but how do we say to students, convey to students, uh, it's not the end of the world if you fell off A through G in the ninth grade? We want you to, you know, have these opportunities. Uh, but then how do we convey that the pathway that they're in isn't the end-all, be-all either, right? Where they feel, well, I'm stuck here. And that, that was a set, me kind of walking away, well, I, I, ROTC, right? She was like, no knock on my pathway, but I don't connect that to anything, uh, that I want to do. So that, that, that was my sentiment. Brian had anything that?
No, I think you covered it, uh, covered it perfectly. I, I just want to acknowledge one thing that they did highlight is that they really acknowledged the work of our counselors. Um, they mentioned multiple times how, um, how their counselors helped them understand A through G. Um, and just so that everyone's aware, Cabrillo has really, for the last four years or so, have really placed an intense focus on A through G courses. Um, and has simplified it down to, and we had one kid who actually said it's like a checklist, simplified it down to there are fifteen classes that you have to pass with at least a C or higher. It's just that simple. And so they have made T-shirts, they made posters, um, and so it's been an ongoing campaign. Uh, but the counselors have really been intent on sending that message to kids and they, they acknowledge that. So I think we should at, at least, um, also acknowledge our counselors as well, cause they did, um, highlight them.
Yeah, actually, um, I do want to say that I do know Cabrillo had some T-shirts made that have A through G to, to bring awareness to kids because they actually even went to some of the middle schools and my husband was boarding one of them. And they used actually the streets, uh, in the west side, uh, from the A through G to remind kids that these were, uh, courses that they needed to take. Um, at Hamilton, I did ask students, um, if they knew about the A through G requirement. And one student said, um, that he had learned that he needed them to graduate, but he only learned about them on Friday. So nobody else, uh, had any idea of the A through G requirements. And, um, and so I think that, uh, uh, that, that is a problem. Where it, the awareness of kids, um, uh, in the middle school as to what they need to do to be able to graduate with courses that, um, are needed to, uh, move on to higher education if they wanted to, that knowledge isn't there, at least it wasn't there, uh, today. One of the things that stood out was that, um, they had not, with the exception of one student, had not seen their counselor. So I did ask, how often do you meet with your, uh, with your counselor? One student had met with their counselor, so thus the very big need for more counselors in the district. They are critical in schools in helping kids navigate the system and, um, and, and help them in that journey to, to complete those A through G required, uh, courses. Um, I went on to even ask kids about, um, if they knew, i- if they given the, the option if they'd take honors history or history. So one of the students said, yes, I would take the honors history. But I think important for kids, uh, to also know the difference between taking a regular course versus an honors course versus an AP course. And I think that it's a little late once we get to high school because if they start off not taking the courses that they need to move on to higher education and then realize, I want to go to college when I, um, you know, when they're in junior or senior, it may just be a little too late. So I think those conversations absolutely need to begin in the middle school. And, um, and we absolutely need kids seeing counselors in the middle school so that they are taking the courses there, um, in preparation for high school. So it was, it was great, um, uh, the visit at Hamilton. I, you know, I, I really just highlighted, uh, that need for, for counselors.
Mr. Otto, do you have some observations from your visit?
Yeah, I, I tried to talk to students about, uh, A through G requirements and there was very little knowledge whatsoever of what they were. And, uh, I asked them specifically, um, uh, what they were interested in. And it went all the way from, I want to be in cybersecurity, I want to be a musician, uh, I wanna do, uh, uh, nobody talked about specific college things that they, that they really wanted to do. When I tried to draw them out about things that they were interested in, one said, I want to be in law or real estate. Uh, I talked about pathways and they really didn't have a good concept of what the pathways were. Um, and, um, I tried to educate them a little bit about it and, uh, they just seemed young. And, um, that, uh, they were, wanted to have it, but I, I couldn't agree with the point more that, uh, it's important for them to have these concepts early on so they can start thinking about it. And that's all they need to do is they need, need to be aware of it. And, uh, I have learned with, uh, kids and grandkids that it's very important to not just ta- talk to them about it because it goes in one ear and out the other. And, uh, yeah, if you can do it, um, visually or, uh, in, in ways that, uh, they're, they're more, that they can approach more or, or, or understand more, that, uh, you, it's important to get it across and there are ways to make sure that it's gotten across. That, uh, uh, you, it's important to get it across and there are ways to make sure that it's gotten across or, or more likely to be brought, made across.
If only we had a Long Beach promise, Mr. Otto, that guaranteed preferential admission to any LBUSD grad that met the minimum A through G requirements.
Oh, don't we have that?
If only.
I do want to say that, um, a couple of kids did, uh, have aspirations of going to UCLA, to NYU. Um, so, so they, they are thinking beyond high school. Um, when I asked, who do they go to? Who is their go-to when they need to help or when they need, uh, uh, help in navigating the system or, um, even for help when it came to, um, to classwork? If it wasn't their teacher, who was in this case, the instrumental, it's so instrumental in their, in their educational journey, it was an older sibling. So I think that, um, you know, I've pushed for a while on that increase in counselors because I understand that a lot of our kids don't have those parents that are in education, our counselors, our VPs, or even have a degree, right? And, uh, may have not even been to a college and, uh, may have a difficult time, uh, walking their kids through the courses they have to take, you know, the tests that they may have to take. And so, uh, again, critical is to have, uh, counselors for our students.
Anything else on A through G?
Quick, quick question, uh, Dr. Madrigal. So, um, we have the sort of broad, uh, data, um, district-wide, and then we have the subset of data here for both schools. I'm wondering, um, if at some point in, in our conversations, as we look deeper at either best practices or specific schools, if we could also look at, um, black students, uh, with IEPs, uh, as well and see, you know, what, how they're doing, whether it's A through G completion, uh, you know, some of the other indicators that we're looking at. Uh, I know that there's been ongoing conversations with Dr. Sosa Valderrama and the team around alternative diploma, uh, pathways as well. Um, so I'd love to hear as a, as a subgroup of our black, uh, student success indicators, um, you know, questions around, uh, our students with disabilities as well.
And I have a, um, a question. I don't know who wants to answer this one, but when are the middle school students made aware of pathways throughout the district? Or how? When or how?
Generally, I mean, it varies, you know, varies by school, but, but as a system, uh, when they begin a school of choice process, we do have actually, um, at sites, we have someone from a site, whether it's a teacher or a counselor, that provides, um, a lesson, if you will, um, regarding each of our high schools and what they have to offer. And then, of course, as you know, our sites have, uh, the opportunities to, um, share, um, what they offer as well.
I will add, the first time that our students actually hear about A through G is during their college field trips, Long Beach City College and to Cal State Long Beach. It's part of the curriculum that they experience as part of the, the field trip. So all fourth graders, as a reminder, go to Long Beach City College. All fifth graders go to Cal State Long Beach. That is part of the, the lessons that they experience. Again, just at an exposure level. We also have some expansion work going on in middle school that is around A through G rates, which is helping us to pilot and to think about different programming in the middle schools that will improve upon what you're talking about. So that the conversation is really good timing for us just to, to generate some new ideas and to bring your observations into the work that we're doing.
Just to add on, I, I want to thank, uh, Dr. Madrigal and her team, uh, Dr. Fender, Dara Hutt, um, and actually Chris Itzen, who's right on the other side of that glass. I know they, they spent a lot of time and energy to make sure that today, it wasn't, wasn't about making today perfect, but it was about making sure that logistics were there. They took your questions that you all generated a couple of meetings ago, put those together to create the questions we had. So thank you, Veronica and team. Uh, one thing I just want to add in and kind of appreciation for myself, um, it's, it's so awesome to listen to students and we know how important the power of listening to students is. Even, even if it was just 12 or 13 at Cabrillo, uh, Mr. Samuels and I walked out of there talking about like us doing our own little audit of when are students getting information about their pathways and about their A through G? We have, we have programs right now where students can log in to see where they're at with A through G and some of the students didn't even know about it. So again, just a little snapshot, just listening to a few students has already kind of prompted us to think about, okay, what can we do to make sure the communication is clear, to make sure it's earlier in their, in their journey? Um, so just again, appreciation Veronica and team for allowing us to have this opportunity.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for making that possible.
Including the staffs at the respective schools, uh, too. Thank you.
Yes, and especially our students. Okay, well, that brings us to, um, new business. And, um, we have Mr. Wayne Strumford joining us so we can talk about , uh, Board Bylaws 9015 and 9025. And, look at that, we're bringing you in at a respectable time in the evening. Welcome, Mr. Strumford.
Uh, thank you. It's two and a half hours earlier than last meeting, so.
Is, is it true your flight is on Friday?
All right. Uh, thank you, Madam President, Board members, Dr. Baker, senior staff. Tonight, we have two proposed Board Bylaws on the agenda for discussion and potential approval. Bylaw 9015 is regarding agenda planning and 9025 is regarding membership of board members, uh, to board and non-board committees and also various organizations. It's, it's fine. We'll go without it at first. So let's start with, uh, Board Bylaw 9015. I'll just do a quick introduction and turn it over to the board. This bylaw is currently in existence. Um, what you have tonight are extensive edits to that. Uh, the introduction focuses on the influence that a student outcomes focus has on agendas. Um, thank you. Okay. The, sorry. The edits create three sections to this bylaw. So instead of just one section, there's now three. The first section is board meeting agenda items. The second section is board agenda timeline. And the third section is the board member recusals. Section one lays out how an agenda comes to be and includes written directions on how to get an item on the agenda for board members, for members of the public, and a hybrid of these two. When a member of the public speaks at a board meeting and a member wants to add it to a future item based on the public comment. Board Agenda Timeline section is all new and its purpose is to allow for less time on consent items and agenda items that are not student outcome focused. This is done by having board members reviewing the agenda materials and asking questions ahead of the meeting, having staff provide answers to board members in a public forum, and then creating a process for taking items off the consent calendar if necessary for discussion. Finally, the Board Member Recusal section provides in writing, uh, two processes for board members who may have a conflict of interest and decide to recuse themselves from voting. So those are the three areas. That's sort of an introduction to this bylaw. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I think at this point I'll turn it over to the board to have your discussion.
Yes, I, I'll, I'll start, um, because I think there should be a correction on the, uh, public content background. It states that, it reads, "On December 7, 2024, the board held a study session to impart review draft bylaws developed in collaboration with the Council of Great City Schools and Special Counsel." But we were calling it a retreat. And so for the public, for us, as board members, for myself, I'll speak for myself, uh, we were calling it a retreat. So I think, um, it should be, it, it, uh, we held a retreat that should be, uh, in this page. And, um, and it was, we, we didn't hold the retreat to review draft bylaws, uh, but as per the meaning, it was to give information and potentially take action on them. So I think that we, we, we are, should be clear, uh, that that's what we were doing. Um, I also want to raise some concerns regarding the decision-making process of these bylaws. Um, changes were made outside of the board meeting. So, uh, yourself and, uh, uh, the consultant met with us individually. Um, and then we were presented with changes. While the original changes made back in December mirrored San Francisco Unified School Districts, their bylaws, um, I think for the sake of transparency, um, which, it would have been a good idea to have discussed these publicly, collectively versus individually. I want to point that out just because if I take the, um, in, in some of these bylaws that, that have been given to us more recently and I compare them to the December 7th, changes were made without us ma- uh, agreeing, without us taking anything to a vote on some changes.
Well, well, let me, if I can, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Lopez, but I just want to make clear that changes, the changes are draft changes that are for your consideration and they're, the changes are based on all of your input to us, uh, after the December 7th meeting. So there are changes that are proposed here to try to help the board along to get to a majority of decision. But the, I, I'm not, I didn't make any changes that I'm telling you to make. I'm, I'm making some proposals.
I understand. What I am saying is that for transparency reasons, it would have been a good idea to have those discussions in a, in an open setting so that, um, I, uh, could hear what my colleagues had to say in the public, really, to see what, what, uh, what we're, what we're, wh- why we feel so strongly about a change here or, or, or there. So what we have are the, um, are the bylaws now revised with the changes that we gave individually. And, um, but I personally think that that's problematic. Um, so like...
If I could, if I could just add, it seems to me that we're, um, we're discussing these in public now.
Right.
Based on all the information up to this point. And so that provides transparency because we're discussing it openly in public.
And I, I agree, but for, for clarification, what I would have, that would have been a good idea is to take, this is what we have, uh, this is the bylaw that we have. Let's talk about the changes that we'd like to see and then go take them and, and make those revisions. But having said that, I just wanted to, to point that out just because it has become, uh, uh, you know, a bylaw has gone through a ton of changes. And so when I compare the bylaws that we had in December to now, there's definitely a, a number of drafts. A question on the first paragraph, uh, where you eliminated "May place matters on the board agenda," referring to what the board president, vice president, and superintendent can do "to shall review the agenda before it is published and the board president shall have final authority." So my question is, who will be tasked with putting the agenda together? So in other words, who will be deciding what goes on the agenda? And I'm asking this because, um, Bylaw 1915 states that "It shall be the goal of the district's staff to facilitate the placement of all board members' requests on the agenda whenever possible." And I think that's the, the key word, "whenever possible", given they directly relate to monitoring of the board adopted goals and setting a monitoring of the gold guardrails. This is not only sounds like the district is putting the agenda together, but the wording limits what can be added to the agenda. So who is putting the agenda with that wording that we have in the bylaws?
If I understand your question correctly, staff, the superintendent, president, vice president, make a decision as to what will be on the agenda. And as it says in number one, the board president will have final authority over what each item will be on. And there's also, there's several different ways in which you can have an item placed on the agenda, including board members and members of the public.
Right. So, so the, so, so to clarify, the staff will put the agenda together and then this, uh, the board president will, um, um, will approve that versus the president, perhaps with the superintendent coming together to put the agenda together?
As I understand right now, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, because I've been, haven't been in the, the thick of it for the past eight, nine months, but I believe that's what we've been doing.
Right. That, that's what we've been doing, but the wording here, that's why I wanted clarification. And so long as we have it on record, because just the, um, the, the, uh, the wording here, the way it's written, it doesn't sound like that. But I'm, but, but thank you for that. Um...
Dr. Baker, did you want to?
No, I just wanted to acknowledge that the shift in practice is towards more involvement with the board president in particular. And so where that appears is probably across several bylaws. And perhaps you want to either take a minute to reread the entire bylaw and look through the different section of, sections of this or to have Mr. Strumford just highlight some of the, the portions of this that, that speak to that. There are, in this, um, in this bylaw, as I read, there are, um, special attention paid to things that are around student outcome-focused governance monitoring. Um, the board, as number one says, the board president, vice president, the superintendent and/or authorized designees shall review the agenda before it is published and the board president shall have the final authority over whether each item on the agenda is placed in. So it is certainly an, an expectation that staff produce all of the things that a board member would not have access to. For example, in the consent calendar, there are many, but either legally required or aspects of business that come to you either for ratification and/or approval before funds are, um, released on a contract. All of those are the work of the staff. That wouldn't be something that board members would be able to actually have access to prior to them being on the draft agenda. And so this proposes more involvement of a, of a board member than historically has been. Mrs. Craig had, thank you, has been working her way into this. So, um, participating in the agenda development, especially as it has related to governance practices, has been a deciding factor when something is coming to, um, either a vote or a need for discussion. She is making a decision about those things. This codifies that and actually starts to, um, have a role that would be in every other week kind of meeting for the president or whoever serves in the presidency to be more involved in the actual formation of that agenda.
You propose changes, um, also to this bylaw may hinder transparency. Board Bylaw 9015 states, "Board members will have four days to submit questions about the agenda items to the superintendent." And the superintendent will have one day to create a Q and A document of responses to board member questions. Currently, board members can ask questions during meetings and under this, uh, proposed bylaw, a Q and A document would be posted online for public information. But it would not include who asked the questions. What would happen in the event, this is a question, that a board member has a question during a meeting?
If it's a, a public meeting, if I'm understanding your question, obviously, if you had a question, we'd know it was you. The, the point of not, uh, saying who the question comes from is, is in regards to the Brown Act. It's not an open session. It's in, it, it's in an email or it's in discussion outside of a board meeting. So that's the reason for that.
Okay, but, uh, so we're going to, it's rather than ask questions here, uh, publicly, if we're going to ask, send our questions. But where we're in meetings, we have a question. What would happen to that board member if they come up, you know, if they asked questions?
Are you, are you saying, would we still be allowed to ask questions during a meeting?
Yes.
Yes. We, we would still be allowed to ask questions during a meeting. Absolutely.
The idea behind this is to create more time for student outcome-focused government and less time on contracts and business that is not associated to the student outcomes. That's the idea behind it.
Okay, so, but we would still be allowed and be just perfectly fine asking questions here in the meetings? Beyond those Q and A?
I, I think that'd be up to the president. Your, your president is saying yes.
Yeah, I'm...
Because that's not the way it's worded here. So I just want clarification on that.
Well, I didn't read anything here that said we weren't allowed to ask questions during a meeting. So there's nothing that's, well...
Perfect.
I shouldn't, let me, let me rephrase that. The only thing that would be, um, holding us back from asking questions during a meeting is the understanding that we want our meetings to become more efficient, more effective, and focused on student outcomes. And so if we're spending our time on asking questions that don't relate to student outcomes, then we're not working towards our goal of supporting student outcome-focused governance. And so everything is, um, the, the whole picture. So we've laid out our board goals, we, we've laid out the board guardrails and... and our support of that is to ensure the meetings are an effective use of time and an opportunity to do monitoring and those types of activities that we spend time on as opposed to other types of business items, which is why we have the consent calendar. We group all those business-type things so we can take one vote, allowing us to spend more time to get a deeper dive into the monitoring part.
Perfect. So we wouldn't be able to ask questions on consent calendar?
No, that's not true. We would, we would.
Perfect.
But I think this board law, board bylaw, holy cow. This board bylaw speaks more to where we want to put our value and how we value our time, and that's in focusing on the student outcomes. So even though the board bylaw says, well, does not say that we, does not say anything about preventing us asking questions, what would prevent us from asking questions is that we understand the focus should be on the students.
It's just because it clearly states that if we have questions, we have to submit them, and then they would create a Q and A online. So...
Yes.
And also, under this bylaw, members, board members have one day to request an item be removed from consent calendar and placed in the regular agenda. But it would take at least three board members to request that item be moved from the consent calendar in order to move it to the regular agenda. So the superintendent would notify the board president, and the change to the agenda would be announced at the meeting when the board is voting to approve the agenda. I think my question here is, what if a board member wants to move something from the agenda, and then obviously the three other board members didn't make that request prior to the meeting? So...
Yeah. To take it off the consent agenda would require a majority of the board.
And prior to the meeting?
That's the idea of this, is to, again, be able to be efficient with items that aren't related to student outcome.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So Wayne, I just, walk me, let's walk through what this bylaw is. Just on the, I just want to focus on the agenda-setting component of the bylaw. First component, as I understand it, and I'm looking for just affirmation or nor you're wrong about that one. First component of this is the process by which this board will determine how the agenda is reviewed. And according to this, my understanding is, it's reviewed by president, vice president, superintendent, and/or its designee. But what they're doing is reviewing to make sure there's adherence and alignment to the values that we just talked about, board goals and guardrails.
Correct, and the law.
Yes, and the law. Second, and final, as a part of that first one, final authority on the agenda rests with the board president?
Correct.
Okay. Second component, just reading sequentially here, is the process by which a board member can add an item to the agenda. So we're talking about agenda setting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Third component is process by which a member of the public can add an item to the agenda. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Fourth component is process by which a board member from the floor, based on public comment, can add an item to the agenda.
That's correct. We almost saw that tonight, in fact.
Yes. So that's what is in this bylaw right now, and the wording of it reflects that current, what you just affirmed.
Correct.
Okay.
And also, on page three, it says that for each board meeting, the superintendent will provide all items to be considered. So I think that the question that I had was, is it the board president that's going to put this agenda together? Is it going to be a combination of both? Because the way I read it, I may just completely be off, but the way I'm reading this bylaw, it sounds like, yes, the board president would approve of it, but it is the, it's the superintendent and other staff that would put, bring agenda items to the agenda.
As it is now, correct.
Okay. So then, so, okay, because I was under the impression that the board president could put items on the agenda right now.
Well, that's correct, but I thought your question was, who puts everything together to take it to the agenda? And the answer to that question is staff does that. As it reads, the board president, whoever that is, right now it's Ms. Craighead, makes the final decision as to what goes on the agenda. But gathering the documents and deciding what, for her to review to decide that is going to be staff and the superintendent.
Absolutely. I think what I was hoping was that a board president would have the authority to say, I'd like to have this on the agenda and place it on the agenda. I thought that that's what we have right now.
Right. Well, this board bylaw covers that.
Not the way it's written.
No, I'm sorry?
The way it's written, it sounds like they put it and then you only approve it, but you don't get to say, I want this or that on the agenda.
In the first paragraph, no, I'm sorry, second paragraph, second paragraph. And so on the, on page one of board bylaw 1915, it would be the second paragraph, it's in red, and it says, "All effort shall be made to ensure an agenda item at each regular board meeting include the monitoring of student outcomes. When planning an agenda, special attention should be directed to dedicate a majority of the meeting to monitoring and discussion of student outcomes. This includes time on the regular meeting agendas to discuss and set goals, guardrails, and self-evaluation of the board regarding the topic of student outcomes." That's in the very beginning of agenda planning. So from the outset, we all know what the expectation is for setting the agenda.
And then on page three, it says that the superintendent will provide all items to be considered. So I think that, I think what, just tonight, I think we're probably ready to move, but my vote will reflect that I believe changes are not good for our stakeholders. These bylaws have the potential to significantly restrict the actions of board members, limiting our ability to effectively serve our constituents.
I'm not sure I understand how this restricts our ability during meetings.
Look, the way that they are written, it is clear that, I mean, I'm glad that in public record we have that, we can ask questions, but the way it's written, it's, if we have questions, we put them on a Q and A. The way it's written, it's, the agenda items will be given to the board president to approve or not. And I think that it should probably be a combination of what's happening right now. Hopefully, the board president saying, I'd like to see this on the agenda, that on the agenda, because I think it's important. And if we don't have that, I think that that's a problem. And maybe it's just the wording that we have to change here, but I think it's pretty clear, the way it's written. And so I think that once we vote on it, we're going to turn back and say, but it's here. It's on paper, and we have to follow this once we vote on this.
But the part on page three about submitting questions and having them answered, that's not restricting us in any way. That's just giving staff time to answer questions because when we are asking questions during the meeting, that puts staff on the spot, and they might not have the information off the top of their head or at their fingertips. And so this way, if we're submitting questions ahead of time, they have the opportunity to answer them more effectively.
Absolutely. I agree.
So it's twofold.
But there's two things. I think that if something's on the agenda, you should be prepared to answer questions. So if we're not prepared to answer questions, it probably shouldn't be on the agenda. So the other thing is that, what if I didn't have time to timely submit my questions? And so we don't have, so I didn't timely submit my questions, I don't have the response. But I also think, more importantly, sometimes these questions are really for transparency. I think it's, it's a good thing for the public to know, like, hey, this question that they may be having as well, like, oh, that was the answer to that question. So for me, also, this is also about transparency.
Well, I think it's very transparent when we have the questions and the answers available online.
That's if. So with all due respect, President Craighead, I think we have to also be mindful that not everyone can navigate technology, not everyone has access to technology, and we are making these assumptions. But with that, I completely respect how, you know, we, you know, my colleagues may see this. I have to also do what I feel is in the best interest of those who I'm representing.
Right. Well, I think if somebody is having trouble navigating technology or not having access to technology, they're also not having access to these meetings unless they're here in person. So I feel like this provides transparency to the best of our ability, and there's a public record of it. But anyhow, so I think maybe if somebody makes a motion, we can go from there.
Move to approve, but anticipating more time for discussion?
Absolutely.
Move to approve.
Second.
More time for discussion.
So I just want to make sure, in the spirit of Ms. Lopez's observ, a comment, that I'm clear here, Wayne. Walk me through. I heard something in tonight's discussion. I want to request for an item to be placed on an agenda. Do I have the, as I'm reading this, I want insurance. I'm reading that there's a process here that describes, I'll even use a real example. Again, with the parameters of understanding X many meetings from now, all that stuff, right? I'd like to get an update on where we're at with CCT. We heard public comment, we've been contacted. Do I have an ability as a board member to request for that item to be on the agenda?
Yes, you do. There's actually two options. If somebody, if you have a public speaker, right? If a public speaker comes up and says something that piques your interest and you want to have something on the agenda, you can do one of two things. You can either say, board members, I'm interested in having an item in the near future, next board meeting, on Project X. I would like to make a motion that we put this on the agenda for June 5th, whatever day that is. And then you would have a second and a vote for it. That's one way to do it.
Or I can write it in.
Right then and there.
I can write it in, request it.
Or the other option is, you can write it in, make the request.
Yeah. And then it wouldn't be the superintendent deciding?
Correct. It's going to be the board president.
Board president would decide. Then the value here is that we want to anchor it in that it's, that we're spending the majority of our time, 50% or more, of our meetings on board goals and guardrails.
Yes, that's correct.
So if at the next meeting, we don't have 50%, the board president may say, you know what? We can't get it on this next meeting because that's going to put us at 80% non-board goals-related. But at the following meeting, we'll put that item on. As an example, board president is the one that, when the board president reviews with the superintendent, with the vice president, to see what we have for each item, the board president can make the recommendation that we don't put it on the next agenda, but on the following agenda.
Correct.
Okay. So that's in here, Wayne. We're voting on making sure that board members can add items to our agenda.
Yes, as it is currently.
Correct.
We're just specifically outlawing a process that we think may be more effective. And after talking to board members with some ideas, I added some things that were...
I think you meant to say outlining, not outlawing, attorney.
Yeah, okay, thank you. It's after seven, so...
Okay. Second thing I want to make sure is, there's a difference, and as I read it, it's clear to me, but for, again, in the sake of transparency, between the superintendent and staff compiling agendas versus the president having final review of saying, you know what, that's not going to go on this one, or, hey, we did request another item, I don't see it, we're adding it on.
Correct.
Okay. Third point, if a member of the public does not feel that we are prioritizing a particular issue of concern or priority or a salient thing that's going on in their community, they have the ability to come to public comment. We have the ability, as you've already outlined, Wayne, from the floor, to say, I'd like to request for this item to be put at the next agenda or a future agenda, and if I can get my colleagues to second, and we vote for it, boom. It's on, if we vote in favor of that, it will appear on, in the near future. And it's outlined here, how many meetings and all that stuff.
Correct.
Okay. So in terms of agenda setting, I'm clear on, we have a process to add agenda items. We have a process for review. President has full authority on it. And if the member of the, if a member of the public wants to come in, or members of the public, we have a process to move forward on those items by the board. But that's in here.
That's what this bylaw does in part, yes.
And there are no restrictions on me right now as a board member to be able to ask questions, raise concerns, whether they're on a consent calendar or whether they're on an item not on the consent calendar. There is no limitation or restriction for me as a board member to ask questions or concerns.
Correct. The, to me, from my experience over the year with boards, the issue with the regular, the timeline, it's forward-thinking because it isn't that typical, right? One of the problems that we saw last year was the amount of time spent on consent calendar was 9% of your board meeting. And that typically should be less than 5%. It's a consent calendar. And so part of the idea here is, okay, how can we do this in a way that saves us time in the meeting but provides still transparency? It's asking questions, getting answers, and also there'd be times where the question is something that needs some work or a board member wants to know the answer to the question before the meeting, right?
But my, in that scenario, my options are still the same. I can either ask a question before the meeting, and in this case, my question would be codified and responded to publicly, or I can ask the question at the meeting.
That's as the president sees it, and I agree.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Then let's go ahead and take a vote on this. I'm going to ask Dr. Baker to take a roll call vote.
All right. Bylaw 1915, Ms. Lopez?
So this is a reverse of our equity policy, so my vote is no, nay.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Mrs. Craighead?
Aye.
Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Next, we will be discussing board bylaw 90... Wait for it. 25. 9025.
This is, Madam President, this is a new bylaw that has been expanded since it was first introduced in December meeting, based on board member comments. There are two sections to this bylaw. Board committees and board membership and other committees in various organizations. The key language in this bylaw pertains to appointments to board committees. This was something that was discussed in open session back in December, and again, with several, I think a majority of the board members during my conversations. And that is that appointments to board committees, non-board committees, and various organizations be accomplished by a majority vote of the board. That is who is going to make the decision, as to who is going to be on committees or in various organizations representing the board. It'll be the board majority making that decision.
Right. And that would, that would prevent a situation where you have somebody who wants to serve on a committee but is being maybe held back by one or two people or whatever situation. This allows every board member to have the equal opportunity to serve on a committee with having the whole board.
Correct. I recall, my recollection in previous open meetings was a concern was that, not currently, but in the past, there may have been some issues between the president and a board member, and if the president had the power... And if the president had the power, that board member ends up not being able to participate in, in hardly any committees. This, uh, eliminates that situation where now you have a majority of the board, which is, you know, the board making those decisions.
Right. So it takes the power from a single person and gives it to the board as a whole?
Correct.
Okay.
So here again, we have, we, this bylaw didn't exist, and, uh, in December, and the draft that we have is a revised draft. So I guess my question is, can you tell me which one of my colleagues said, "Hey, we need a, uh, a bylaw that, uh, to form committees"?
This was a suggestion, uh, by AJ and Greg, um, based on their work. And it's also one I've seen many a time in my career, um, that does help. And I think, um, to have something in writing eliminates problems going down in the future. It's a small bylaw. It's not a, uh, awfully controversial one. I think it just lays out the rules that will work, but I understand that you have-
This is exactly my problem. These come from San Francisco Unified. If we look at what they have merit, and you, actually, when you and I spoke, you did admit to that.
I, I just-
Mr. Schrumfer, back in, back in, um-
If I could speak for a second?
In November.
Okay. I didn't admit to anything. What I said was, there are several of these bylaws that San Francisco Unified used. Your question to me back in November was, are these used by, does any other school board have these? And I said, yes. AJ has worked with San Francisco Unified, and there are a number of bylaws that are similar. These changes that are made are Long Beach Unified changes. They are not San Francisco Unified. The, the idea behind it was used in San Francisco. That happens to be because AJ worked with that board as well. But, uh, these are not, these are not identical. I'm not, I'm not presenting to you San Francisco Unified board bylaws to approve for Long Beach Unified. That's not correct.
But, uh, but to clarify, um, this, a bylaw like this one didn't originate from a board member saying, "Hey, like, let's form, uh, a bylaw, like, let's focus on committees." But it was a recommendation from, um, from yourself or from, uh, from Greg, right?
The, the board back in September was sent a letter from me that asked questions as to what would need to be changed, what would be positive changes, what do you like, what do you dislike? What kind of board bylaws could we use? From that, we then developed, Greg, AJ, and I developed suggested bylaws. That's what we did. I, I don't know what you're insinuating, if you're saying that I'm like somehow sneaking these in?
No.
I don't, you know, to me, again, these are all what I think most board experts would say is good government. And having these in writing is a positive thing for the board to go forward, for governance purposes. So that's, that's what these are. Some of them are going to be similar to San Francisco. Some of them are gonna be similar to LAUSD. Some of them could be similar to a lot of school districts throughout the state.
And Wayne, just for the matter of public record, I, I don't, I don't recall if I'm the one that said we need to have these, this particular bylaw, but I do remember in 2018, asking the question. And this isn't, you know, we have a board member here that was on the board at the time. When I reference, uh, things about my experience on the board, it's not to undermine or talk trash about the previous board. It's just reflecting what my experience was. When I asked a question from Legal at the time as to what was the process for the appointment of board members or selection of board members onto board committees, there was no process. And at that time, Legal could not direct me to, "Here's the bylaw," or "Here's the policy on that." Question went unanswered. So I went by whatever the serving president at the time allowed for me to serve on. And I don't know if there was a discussion between the president and the superintendent or what discussion took place. All I know is I did, I did not have a choice or options for which committee I participated in. Next year, 2019, I asked the question again. At some point in 2019 or 2020, I asked the question at a board meeting or raised the, "Hey, it would be, um, important to identify, what is our process for both creating committees or, and/or constituting committees?" Because at that time, again, the response from Legal was that they weren't sure whether the then committees were initially created by who. We just had committee assignments, right? And at that time, um, it was the president. This is, this is what, was what, the information that was passed on to me. And so I did express questions around, "Well, what if I want to serve on another committee and request to serve on another committee, and I don't get my choice? What, what is the process?" So I asked the question again, "When you became Legal?" I asked the question, "When Jeff became Legal?" So I may not have specifically said, "Give me a bylaw." Um, but that was also my understanding of the practice that we used prior to codifying this with the selection of Mr. Miller on the, what is it called? Timeline Committee or what is it called?
Yeah.
Yeah. Following, because we had a conversation with, uh, with, initially with AJ at some point, but at that point, it was with Greg, so, uh, a- again, uh, i- if it's about who created this, well, you, you suggested this language based on your research. But I, I'll take full ownership and responsibility that I've been questioning, what is our process for both creating committees and constituting committees? And without a process, I think our recourse is, I'm asking for legal advices, uh, how can we have committees and formation of committees and constitution of committees without bu- without a policy to govern that?
Right. And, and I can say, I do remember you asking those questions, and you're absolutely right. The process that was in pr- in place, because I participated in this process, was that the president assigned committees. And that's, that's how it was done.
And to, to confirm, this process is a more equitable approach. Would you agree?
I would absolutely agree that this is a more equitable approach. I would also say that this prevents us from going back to the way it used to occur and, you know, provide, uh, provide more guide, guidelines for the board to be more effective. And the more we can, you know, codify these processes, then it, it helps us. We don't have to have, um, we don't have to have that turmoil that can result from a board member wanting to serve on a committee and not having the opportunity to do so. So I see that as protecting not just our board, but, but future boards in providing guidelines. And so when you talk about asking questions, I think questions have to be asked so that we can improve, so that we're always, um, having high expectations for ourselves because we have high expectations for everyone else. And so we have to live up to those expectations, and this type of bylaw helps us to do that. Yes.
Yeah, I, I take a, a slightly different view of this, and that is that this is not only more transparent, but it's more democratic. And what we, what it gives is us, everybody in the public and here, the ability to say, it goes away with the question of, "How did that person get on that committee?" Uh, and they say, "Well, he had special expertise, and he really ought to be able to do that." And, uh, and, and so the president has made that decision. Not anymore. Under this guideline, under this, uh, bylaw, what will happen is that the board will vote on who gets to go on the committees. Now, is there mischief going on? I don't know. I don't think so. Uh, but this ensures it. And, uh, that's important democratically. And it's better, and I, by the way, I think it's in the best interest of the board because what you really want is a board that works together. Everybody on the board working together. And if you have the way it is now, you create the opportunity not only for mischief, but for, for, for bad feelings. So this is a, a mo- a way to, another reason for this is to make the board work more closely together and recognize each other, you know, to, to, to talk to one another. And if you, if, if you make one person have that decision, um, it's, it's bad for decisions. It's bad for the public. They want to know what it is that you're doing. And, uh, and, and this way, we put the, the, w- w- we put this where it deserves to be, and that is when the control of the board, the majority of the board.
Right. Right. Um, was there a motion on the floor? Did we, did somebody make a motion yet?
I think so.
Um, let's, let's have somebody, um-
Move for approval?
Say.
Um, any further discussion or are we ready for the vote?
My vote will reflect that we didn't have this board bylaw in December. And, uh, as we have it, it comes already with revisions, when this is the first time we are collectively, collectively, uh, discussing it.
I just want to make sure I understand, Ms. Lopez, what you're saying. There, there was a draft bylaw of 9025 in the December package, right? You're, you're not, you're not saying that.
Yes. So, but there wasn't a bylaw prior to December. This bylaw came, um, came to existence. It was put together for the retreat.
The draft bylaw was. There currently is not a bylaw for this. That's correct.
Right. So prior to that, so what I'm saying is that it was, we didn't have, we didn't have, um, the district had not adopted bylaw, uh, Jesus, 9025. In December, it was put together, and then the copy that we have now is a revised copy of what was proposed, which we never voted, we, uh-
That's, that's what you're doing now.
We discussed, right.
Yeah. That, that's the case with all of the bylaws, that they were proposed on in December, and we discussed them after that. And then, uh, I've put together, based on the discussions with all of you, with all of us, I've put together suggested edits that I believe the board, uh, would like and would approve. And so that was my goal on this. But yes, this, but this was introduced in December, uh, and it is not currently a board bylaw. It'll be a new bylaw.
And I'll call for the vote. Um, Dr. Baker, will you take a roll call?
Sure. Uh, Ms. Lopez?
No.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
Mrs. Craighead?
Aye.
Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Mr. Miller? Sorry.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, let's see. Next on the agenda, we have-
Thank you, Wayne.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Schrumfer. Um, student outcomes-focused governance implementation timeline. And this is a standing agenda item to help support our, uh, student outcome-focused governance. And so I just have, um, an update to say that the code of ethics statement will be ready for us, um, most likely at the next meeting, I'm gonna say. And also that staff has been very busy working on interim goals. And I see heads nodding, so, um, how about, um, we're, uh, are we still on track for presenting, having those interim goals presented at our June 4th meeting?
So, um, we are on track to bring forward, uh, board goals are already established. The interim goals, um, interim guardrails for discussion. We want to see from across the board if that, if the interim guardrails are in alignment with your understanding of the guardrails themselves. Um, so we'll bring them to you on, uh, the 4th of June. And then likely for a vote, if all goes well, likely for a vote on the 18th of June.
Thank you.
Just, uh, put a clarification, uh, President Craighead. So, um, is what you're meaning, Brian, is that it will be just an information item the first time that they're brought to us?
That's correct.
Okay.
Great. Um, Mr. Miller, did you have anything to add? Um, we both serve on that committee.
No, I, I probably, um, shared already pretty much all of the details that I have at the, um, advisory committee piece. So, no, I'm good.
Okay. Well, in that case, um, you can start us out with a board report.
Thank you. Uh, so there are a couple of things that I wanted to highlight. I think the first one that I'm sure all of us will speak to is the black grad that happened on Sunday. Um, it's, I probably say there's about like five events, but that's one of my favorites, man. I, I, I really, really enjoyed it, um, um, on a, on a number of levels. I think that, um, first, uh, graduations are, are really that pinnacle celebratory moment of all of the work that has been put into, um, these young people and their efforts. And so, uh, to have a moment where we're not just celebrating their graduation, but more importantly, a demographic that's felt underappreciated, undervalued in our district. They shared that through, um, multiple outlets. And to, uh, have a celebratory event, um, for them in particular, uh, I just think is very powerful, you know? Um, and I will say that it is, uh, not just a unique experience, but it's a really fun one. Yeah, you know, all the dancing and, uh, uh, let's call it crowd engagement. Uh, I just really, really, uh-
Yeah, yes.
I think, I just really think that it's, uh, one of those pinnacle celebratory events that we have within our district. And so I just wanted to applaud, uh, the whole BSAI team for all of their work, uh, to make it happen. Uh, obviously, uh, Pastor Zaid over there, man, in his speech, uh, he's, he's such a great orator, let me tell you. Um, uh, and, uh, all the young people who participated as well. It, it takes, uh, a lot of guts to get up in front of your friends and, uh, your peers and to not only, uh, speak power into the future, but to, uh, just be a representative of something that's bigger than you. And so, uh, for the young people that did have a couple of speeches, uh, I wanted to applaud them as, uh, not only did they do a very good job representing, uh, the district, but representing the black graduates from the Long Beach Unified School District. Uh, as we had some awesome kids, wow, one in particular, uh, Brian introduced me to, uh, a young black architect, our future architect. Oh, man, I got super excited. Um, so, uh, all things considered, it was just an awesome, awesome event. And, uh, once again, just a big kudos to, uh, the whole team that made it happen. As, uh, I know I enjoyed myself. I posted a couple of pictures on social media of me and Diana dancing, and people got a, a great kick out of it. And so, uh, and, but more importantly, I got a lot of love from my friends and family who were present about just how cool of an event that that is and how, the great turn that the district is making in regards to valuing, uh, our community. And so it's just very, very appreciative. Um, there is a really cool event coming up in a couple of days, and it is the High School Journey of Students with an IEP from Kinder to Graduation. Uh, that is going to be in partnership with our Special Education Division in Long Beach Forward on May 28th, uh, which, once again, I think is another, um, great moment for our district in regards to navigation. I'm, I'm gonna be, take a huge caveat here, but just follow me. As you guys heard me talk earlier about how I was, uh, talking with students about the game Assassin's Creed. So the part about Assassin's Creed and that video game is that you're really kind of lost, like, you don't really know what the mission is, right? And, uh, but all things considered, you're trying to finish this game and, uh, accomplish the end goal, which you're kind of familiar with. I think that, uh, very similar to Assassin's Creed, as we use as a, as I use as an anecdote, talking about the A through G requirements, that is what workshops like this do for parents with an IEP, right? And helping them have a better understanding on how to not only support their young people, what is going on, uh, to have a, uh, better understanding of the IEP process, but also how to better support their young person as they navigate through the Long Beach Unified School District. And so, uh, just collaborative opportunities like, like this to partner with great organizations like Long Beach Forward. They do such a good job, uh, of, uh, community engagement. And so I just wanted to applaud you all for, once again, helping put on that event. Uh, I also wanted to highlight that, uh, I had an opportunity to meet with the teachers over- over at Washington. Uh, technically, they're located at Mary Butler. Um, uh, this was really just a follow-up, just another opportunity to, uh, speak with them and understand just some of the dynamics that are going on, uh, at their campus, uh, as all of us spend our time in the communities to listen, to learn, to hear how our fifty-thousand-foot decisions trickle down to the campus levels. Uh, I appreciate, uh, not only, uh, Washington's teachers being understanding and, uh, professional, but also, uh, helping us understand some of the concerns that they have as well, but doing it from a very, uh, diplomatic and professional stance. And so I just wanted to make sure that I gave them a special shout out because, uh, not only have they been great about helping me understand, as I'm not somebody who's there on a day-to-day basis, but also carrying the empathy needed to, uh, appreciate the leadership and their good decisions and maybe in some of their not-so-good decisions. And so I just appreciate, um, their willingness to, um, share, but be understanding as well. And then, uh, last but not least, I wanted to give a special shout out to Operation Jump Start. Uh, I was going to bring up that organization a little earlier, uh, when I was talking about the A through G requirements, because as an organization, one of the things that they do very well with the students that they bring into, uh, their fold is, uh, really instill the moniker of get in, stay in, graduate. As their organization is focused towards helping first generation, uh, future college attendees get into college, stay in college and graduate. And so they talk about it as early as the seventh grade. And so as I continue to have this conversation, like I said, these young people have now, by the time they get to the twelfth grade, they are well-versed in the A through G and they're well-versed in, uh, what colleges and what majors and minors and what they want to be when they grow up. And so I just think that it's a, um, great thing that they're doing. And so they're having their celebratory event on June seventh, uh, over at, uh, the Yacht Club in Long Beach. And so I'm looking forward to celebrating with those young men and, uh, young women as well in a couple of days. And so I just wanted to give them a special congratulations today. That'll be the end of my report.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez?
Yeah, very short today, uh, Madam Chair. So there's, there are a lot of things going on the next few weeks here with our district. Activities, events, celebrations, graduations right around the corner. Um, and so I want to, um, restate our, uh, mine, our appreciation for our classified employees, uh, that serve as the backbone for making sure everything on our campuses are beautiful and ready to go and pristine. And whether that's opening up gates early in the morning or staying late, uh, in the evening. Um, and so, uh, again, just a reaffirmation of our appreciation for our classified employees, uh, that are really the backbone, uh, not just around our facilities, but also around the educational support that they provide our students each and every day. Um, and we saw, we, we, we saw a glimpse of that today. And so, um, I know that we don't get a lot of face-to-face time with our classified employees, but, um, you are seen, you are appreciated, and all your efforts allow for those wonderful things to happen in the classrooms and our school sites every single day. So thank you for that. So speaking of pristine, uh, great, uh, community events, Lincoln hosted, Lincoln Elementary hosted, uh, ALC seven's literacy fair, uh, this past Saturday. This is the first time, uh, I hope I'm corrected if I'm wrong, that the literacy fair is actually on a school campus. It usually takes place at a public, uh, park. Uh, so big, big props to, uh, Principal Namec, the entire staff, and, and as importantly, all of the community partners, uh, that helped to make that literacy fair possible in the community, out of school. I can't think of better, cooler places than, uh, schools in our district to host literacy fairs. Uh, and so that obviously impacts thousands of students and families, thousands and thousands of books donated, passed out, and a bunch of other really cool supplies and entertainment that took place. And then, um, I, I thank you again to the students. I know we didn't get to visit Hamilton, uh, but big appreciation to the students that shared their thoughts, their hopes, their dreams, their ideas, their experiences, uh, with us today. It is not easy to have folks show up, um, at your campus and start asking questions about math and, uh, college and career readiness. So thank you for sharing, um, and thank you for reminding us what we're all here, uh, for and, and, and for who. Uh, and then lastly, just looking forward, Dr. Baker, to getting more information on two items from public comment today. Uh, one around CCT, uh, Dr. Solsovalaram. I know there was confirm, you know, conversations going on around this. Um, and then the second, uh, just the kind of the status of our RAP program at Renaissance. That's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Otto?
Okay, um, I want to start by remembering something that I forgot last time, mostly because I came, um, before, uh, Ms. Craig, Craighead. And that was, I too was at the La Sarita's Elementary School one-hundredth year anniversary, which was not only hard to believe, uh, but, uh, but, but mind-blowing. I ran into a woman that used to work at the aquarium, who I knew very well, who's now working at there and a number, another school. And, uh, it was very, very well done. And, uh, I, it was my intention today to go home and get the bag, the La Sarita's Elementary School bag that I bought there, but we had no time. You know, we, uh, we were at the, uh, at, uh, Hamilton today and, uh, I didn't have enough time to go back to my o, office to get my stuff for this meeting, much less to go home and get that bag. But, uh, that was, uh, it was a, a very incredible celebration for a very old school that we've been around for a century. And, uh, it's a fabulous campus if you've never been there.
Ms. Otto, I'm sorry to cut you off. You're, uh, saying a new hip-hop term, get the bag. I was like, I don't know if you're doing this intentionally, but I'm sure there's some kids watching right now and you probably sound really cool.
I think I'm going to ignore that statement. I. I'm just going to own it. Yeah, all right. Okay, I'll do that. And, um, I was not at the black student graduation last Sunday for a pretty good reason. And that was that I was in Sacramento as a delegate to the California School Board Association Conference. And I did my best calculation. It ended about, uh, noon on Sunday, but I did not think that I could drive home, uh, at noon for the two o'clock, uh, event for the, for that, uh, graduation. That was a trip that included a stop in, uh, Corcoran, California, where there is no close airport and, uh, to visit with a client. And that's all I'm going to say about that. Uh, then I had to be in San Francisco and then on to Sacramento before I, um, got, um, wa, was able to, to attend that conference. And I felt, I fully intended to go, but scheduling did not permit that. Um, there, as, uh, Mr. Benitez said, um, it, um, there's so many things that are happening in the next couple of weeks. Uh, it's, uh, it's hard to even get them on my calendar, much less to get to them. And, uh, but I'm looking forward to all of them. I'm especially looking forward to the Wilson graduation, where I have a grandson who is graduating from, uh, Wilson this year. Uh, he and his brother are both, as you've heard me say before, celebrated half-milers. This is not the one that won the Morley title with a time of one-fifty-one flat, uh, last week. Um, he was the junior, uh, senior who was graduating, uh, uh, didn't do that well in the very same way, race, but still did a, a great job. The, um, I want to also say thank you for the opportunity for today's event. I mean, I thought that, that the opportunity to go out and to, uh, meet with students, um, not an easy thing to do, um, for a variety of reasons, but, uh, but very insightful to be able to do that. And I think that's what the people in this district, and I don't mean the people that work here, but I mean all the parents and be, all over Long Beach and Catalina and Lakewood and Signal Hill, uh, expect us to do is to get to know on a personal basis, um, our schools and, uh, what they do. And, uh, it was very educational for me, uh, today. Um, and lastly, um, I, I'd like to adjourn in, uh, in the name of, uh, uh, this, the principal at Stanford's father who died very recently and who is having his memorial service, uh, today and tomorrow. And, um, so, um, uh, I, I've known the principal since he was in elementary school, when he used to come to our house. And, uh, but, uh, it, it's a good relationship and it's always good to have somebody you can call up and say, what's going on? And I've done that, so that's my report.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez?
Yeah, so I attended the Black Student Initiative, uh, graduation yesterday. And it was so beautiful, um, witnessing such a powerful representation of community, of culture and success, which is so rewarding. And I want to acknowledge the faculty and staff whose dedication and support made the event successful. Also, as we celebrate a, uh, Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, I'd like to acknowledge the history, culture and contributions of these communities. Let this month remind us of the strength, resilience and diversity they bring to our society. Let's recognize the importance of amplifying Asian and Pacific Islander voices and continue to uplift, uplift, support and celebrate the incredible impact these communities have in shaping our world. Uh, and like, uh, Dr. Benitez, I'd also like to thank the classified employees for all of that they do in the district. Uh, your work does not go unnoticed. And finally, as we move forward with introducing new board bylaws and revising existing ones, I want to assure those who I represent, students, educators and community members, that I will always keep you at the center and the forefront of my decisions. I will vote in a way that prioritizes your best interest. I want to make it clear that if we continue to, uh, pass bylaws like the ones we did tonight and have been passing for the last, uh, couple of months, OBDUSD risks silencing the voices of the community. This is something I strongly oppose, and I will continue to stand against any bylaw that may limit board members and the work that can potentially silence our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so earlier we were talking about the, um, A through G requirements. And, Mr. Miller, you mentioned a video game and, you know, you have to find things that unlock information, that kind of thing. And, um, in this district, we used to have something like that, and it was called the College and Career Report. And, um, I know, Dr. Lund, you remember that. Um, and one of the things I miss about not having that is that it provided answers that would unlock everybody's potential. It was, it was a report that let kids know not just what the A through G requirements were, but where they were in the grand scheme of things. And, um, uh, individual students were able to include their wishes for the future. And then that report would let them know what they needed to do to get there. Anyhow, it just, it just made me think of that. And, and also in, in speaking with the students today. Um, let's see, I think it was just last week, I was able to attend a teacher appreciation event at McBride High School. And I have to say, the, the big comprehensive high schools are a lot of fun, uh, a lot of activities and everything. But our, our smaller thematic high schools are good too, because they offer those close-knit communities. So it was really neat to see the McBride teachers all squeezed together, um, enjoying this lunch that was provided by the, um, Booster Club. And, and thank you to the parent volunteers who provided the food for the teachers. But it was very fun to be on campus and, and experience, uh, teachers being appreciated in person, because we talk about that. But, you know, I, I think you mentioned, we're, we're not on school campuses on a day-to-day basis, so it's always, um, a good opportunity when we get to be on campus. Um, the, uh, black grad, which, um, was just yesterday, it's unusual, we're meeting on a Monday, and it's fun having a Sunday afternoon, um, activity. Mr. Zaid, you did take us to church. You did, your daughter, your beautiful daughter, Zara, spoke. I have to say, the students that got up there to speak or perform, um, they, they just took hold of the audience. They spoke with, with loud and proud voices, um, that left no question as to what their thoughts were, what they're thinking, what their priorities are. In incredibly strong students, um, you know, we, we just couldn't be more proud of them. There was, uh, one student, um, a graduate from Wilson. He graduated from Wilson last June. He was asked to come back. Um, his name was Brandon Henderson. I had an opportunity to speak with him after his speech, and he said that when he thought about what he was going to say, he thought, you know, how can I inspire the graduating students? What can I say to them that I wish somebody would have said to me? And his message was all about, um, you don't have to be perfect, you just have to be you. And, well, that wasn't the only message, but I just thought he was so mature, so inspiring and motivational. I, I, I'm so impressed with our students. So thank you to the staff and everybody who makes those types of, um, events possible, because it lets our communities see, um, just really how special our students are. And I think it was the Cal State Long Beach, um, oh, my writing is a little, um, Paul Carter. And he talked about, I see your crown. And so it's a reminder for all of the adults in the room, if we look at our students, we have to see their crown. So great event. Um, and it's just the kickoff to the grad season. Uh, Dr. Baker?
Thank you. So many good things going on. Um, I thought I would start just by reminding all of us why we are meeting on a Monday evening. Specifically, that is to avoid interfering with our practice or our open house nights. And so for our public who is watching tomorrow, most schools, most elementary schools are hosting their open house, their spring open house. A wonderful opportunity to see what students have been learning and to interact with teachers and other staff at schools. And then Wednesday, the same for most middle schools. Check their specific webpages, their sites to see the times. But a great week of opportunities for families to be in our school buildings. And then also this week, on Thursday evening, we will be together for our spring employee recognition ceremony, which will bring, um, I think it's twenty retirees for recognition from the board and from others, a number of award winners and others who are deserving of accolades. We will be together to celebrate them. A few things that have happened also. So on Saturday, Lindberg took first and second place in the middle, in the eleventh middle school robo bowl. Wonderful opportunity to see energy, teamwork, learning and competition and lots of STEM kind of learning. So really fun to watch students engage. And I know Mr. Samuels was there for the final match cheering them on. So congratulations to Lindberg Middle School, boys and girls. We also, there were a lot of events going on this weekend, so we were also well-represented at the Long Beach Pride Parade. We had in the, in the board's truck, that truck had more than twenty participating staff who represented us and our families there to celebrate our LGBTQ plus community and have fun as they celebrated in the parade. We also have a wonderful week of classified employee celebration. So you all have passed a resolution tonight affirming the amazing work of our classified staff. On Friday, Class Chella will be held at our Teacher Resource Center. That is an opportunity for our classified staff to come and be recognized, to have a nice lunch served by mostly certificated and other of their colleagues. And at twelve o'clock, the announcement of the Classified Employee of the Year will be announced by the Personnel Commissioner, Commissioners and Dr. Rebecca Lee, who we heard tonight. I want to read the names of a student from each school that was honored yesterday during the black grad celebration. So we had about four hundred students and attendance from across every school. And schools had an opportunity to award an outstanding senior. So I'm just going to read first names. From Browning Destiny, from Cabrio High School Frank, from CAMs Christian, from EPHS Jonah, from Jordan Devondre, from Lakewood Jada, from McBride Noah, Brandon from Milliken, Charlisse from Poly, Nia from Poly Pow, Jade from Reed High School, Genesis from Renaissance High School, Horatio from Sa. Renaissance High School, Horatio from Sato, and Nalani from Wilson High School. These are students that are going all over the country, pursuing college in HBCUs, they're in, um, UC schools, Cal State Long Beach, going on to Long Beach City College, and so, so much to be proud of, and it was wonderful to hear their award read by a member of their school team who knows them well, and can speak about, many of them, about their progress, about things that they've achieved as students in the high schools, and just lots to be proud of. Lastly, wanna acknowledge Human Resource Services, Dr. An and her team have recently learned that they were awarded a $4 million grant around teacher regis- residency and implementation. This is a grant that will span four years, it offsets educational costs for those who are interested in pursuing teaching as a profession. So we hope that a lot of our students who have learned about education, it, while they were a student in the district and have gone on to other institutions, will come back and receive an, an offset of their cost to become a teacher back in Long Beach Unified School District. So many things to look forward to, get graduation schedule on your calendars, everyone, those, those days are coming. I know Alana Sato will be first to lead the way into our graduation season along with CAMHS, and then we will have a wonderful week of celebrating the accomplishments of our high school students, and those promoting from elementary to middle school and middle school to high school. So with that in mind, Mr. Otto, I think you made a recommendation about adjournment in the name of, um, Mr. Dow Lawson's father.
Yes.
I will pass it back to Mrs. Craighead to entertain that.
Okay, well, that concludes the business of, um, tonight's meeting. We will adjourn in the name of, what was his name again?
Uh, Lawson's father.
Oh, okay, so we're not saying his father's name, just Dow? Okay, Mr. Lawson. We're, we're adjur- thank you. We're adjourning, um, in the name of Mr. Lawson, and without any objection, uh, I will adjourn the meeting, and our next regularly scheduled board meeting is Wednesday, June 4th. So, thank you, everybody. Um, see you then.